Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone who is joining us in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the "May 22" meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. The committee will begin this evening by holding a public hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2425. Under state law, each year, the committee must vote by June 1st whether the Boston Public Schools will admit non-residents. Do we have any speakers to testify on the school choice issue, Ms. Parvex?
No, we don't have.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex. As you remember, we received a detailed presentation on the Mass. School Choice Program at the May 8th meeting. Tonight, we will be voting on this matter. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2425. We will then move into our regular meeting. So moved. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Before we start the meeting, I'm thrilled to share two remarkable highlights from this week. First and foremost, I want to extend my sincere congratulations to our superintendent, Mary Skipper, for receiving an honorary degree from Boston College just this past Monday. It was a great experience to attend the commencement and witness our superintendent being honored for her unwavering commitment to education. Secondly, I'm pleased to announce that we just held the Green Garner Award Ceremony, where we awarded scholarships to six deserving BPS students from various schools, including Benca, Boston Latin Academy, Boston Latin School, Jeremiah E. Burke High School, Boston Green Academy, and East Boston High School. I want to take a moment to congratulate all the students for their hard work and dedication that led to this well-deserved recognition. We'll begin the meeting with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8th, 2024, School Committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
That's sick.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair. Yesterday, I provided an update on the district's Systemic Improvement Plan, or what we call SIP, to the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. This was our first update since the creation of the SIP in June of 2022. I want to thank Chair Robinson for joining me and for your supportive remarks. The update focused on three of the eight key areas identified in the SIP: inclusive education, transportation, and facilities and capital planning. I appreciated the positive and collaborative spirit of the meeting with Acting Commissioner Johnston and the board members. It was my first opportunity to share the steady progress that we're making as a district. The follow-up questions by members about chronic absenteeism and transformation schools, as well as a future opportunity to talk about some of our best practices in academic student outcomes made for a really great discussion. We will share the presentation of my remarks with the members. I know Chair Robinson is interested in taking a deeper dive into the SIP in the fall, so we'll work together to get that onto the agenda for a future meeting. The Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, or what we call OME, that team recently concluded a series of community meetings with St. Stephen's Youth Programs and its extended community partners. The purpose of these engagement opportunities was to directly connect with parents, families, and community members. During the last session, Chief Joelle Gomir shared her vision for OME and its alignment to the district's Inclusive Education Plan. She spoke about the areas that are the most important to our families, how we will ensure multilingual learners receive access to a quality education while also experiencing a sense of belonging that focuses on their assets like language and culture and their funds of knowledge. Thank you very much to Member Polanco Garcia for helping to facilitate these meetings, as well as to the dedicated staff and families of the St. Stephen's community. We had a pretty exciting event yesterday. Junior Fahad Yassin became the first student in Burke High School's STEM Aviation Program to fly an airplane, which was a Cessna 172, and he flew it at the Norwood Memorial Airport yesterday. The Burke program is not just the first of its kind in the city, it's the first of its kind in the state. The program director has been working closely with the Federal Aviation Administration to develop the program. Fahad, who's pictured here with Certified Flight Instructor Harry Scales, has logged 60-plus hours training on a simulator over the course of the school year. He and other aviation program graduates will receive their wings on Tuesday, May 28th, at Burke High School during the Second Annual Pinning Ceremony. This program is a great example of what we can do when we center our students and get creative. I look forward to many more flights from Fahad and other students. And just as a sense, this was actually brought and created by a teacher at the Burke. Right? So this is, again, you know, a one-of-a-kind. And was so proud, I will say that once I heard that Fahad had touched down, I was like, "Thank you." That was my mother coming out in me. So again, congratulations. Early this month, I attended the 21st Annual Edvesters Showcase, which is an opportunity for the Edvesters community of educators, nonprofit partners, civic leaders, and supporters to learn about creative, on-the-ground solutions happening in schools. Chair Robinson and Member Cadet Hernandez also attended the event. This year's showcase was focused on our work around the secondary school experience, a topic close to my heart. It included panel discussions on the importance of student voice, rigorous and relevant mathematics, and career-connected learning. The Student Voices panel included students from CASH, which is Community Academy of Science and Health, Boston Adult Technical Academy, which we call BADA, and Fenway High School. Students shared perspectives on the importance of student voice, finding a sense of belonging and community in their schools, and how valuable the early college and career connection experience is and has been for them. Thirteen BPS students in grades 5 through 8 were celebrated on Wednesday, May 8th for completing a 10-week coding program through Capital One in partnership with the district's Parent University Program. Students participate remotely one evening a week with Capital One coder mentors who inspire students to recognize their potential and help them cultivate a greater interest in computer science. Students designed and coded their own apps and websites while learning new skills. The program included students from the Sumner, Dever, Otis, Hurley, Mildred Ave, Quincy Upper, Condon, and B.L.A. All students were given a Capital One Chromebook, T-shirt, and planner. A big thanks to Capital One for its support of our students. We are excited to invite you to the 17th Annual BPS Wellness Summit, which will happen on Tuesday, May 28th, from 8:30 to 12:30 at the Great Hall in Codman Square Health Center. This year's summit theme is "Let's Talk Student Well-being", reflecting on 30 years of youth health experiences. We will recognize the incredible work of our school wellness awardees who have supported the social, emotional, and physical health and well-being of their school communities. Keynote speaker, Kabir Amari, is a nationally respected diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, and justice consultant with expertise and experiences of LGBTQ+ youth of color. They will lead panel discussions of youth and adults to gain perspective on past and current health trends. A healthy breakfast and lunch are also included in the day. On Monday, May 13th, BPS celebrated Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month here at the Bowling Building. The event featured a panel discussion of AANHPI school and district leaders centered on cultivating leadership and highlighting AANHPI experiences in education. I won't list every member, but we had principals, we had central office folks, we had regional supes. And just to be able to hear their different experiences and just share very vulnerably with the community was a very, very special event and just a reaffirmation of all of their leadership in the district. The event was organized in partnership by the BPS Asian Pacific Islander, DESI American Affinity Group, and the BPS Office of Opportunity Gaps. Boston Public Schools' STEM Department is excited to host the annual STEAM Fest at Madison Park Technical Vocational High School on Saturday, June 1st, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. I think last year, Dr. Alkins was the lead speaker there, and it was amazing talk. Join our community of BPS families, students, partners, and educators for our annual celebration of STEAM across the district. More information on the event can be found at bostonpublicschools.org/bps-steam-Appaloosa. Students can also sign up for the Innovation Challenge taking place at the event. Winners will receive pretty awesome STEM prizes, as they did last year. I'd like to close with a preview of one of the district's signature events, the annual valedictorians' luncheon on May 28th at Fenway Park. It's here that we celebrate the brilliance, perseverance, bravery, grit of our incredible valedictorians. Their inspirational stories remind all of us why we do this work, and I look forward to seeing many of you there. That's my superintendent's report, and back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee.
I'll just ask one quick one. Superintendent, you mentioned about the presentation to the DESI Board, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and you mentioned the chair asked you to have a presentation for us later on. I'm just wondering, you know, kind of give reactions to it. Are there some immediate to-dos coming out of that that you think are important to reflect on?
Let's see, through to Chair. So I think it was, we chose three areas to hone in on and present. And then they subsequently asked about safety, which we then spoke about, and they asked about transformation schools. So I think at the end, we covered almost all of the topics. I think, you know, we have a pretty detailed plan of how we're meeting each of the pieces of the SIP, and we're constantly reviewing that and making sure that timelines, you know, we're hitting those timelines and we're getting our deliverables in. What I think, you know, we talked about was that for us, it isn't a checklist. You know, for us, it's really deep, meaningful work, and they echoed that. You know, they said, "For us, this isn't a checklist either." But what you realize is behind so many of the deliverables, there's 10 or 15 other things that you have to do in order to be able to address that one particular thing. But I think what struck me was just all of the really good, steady work that's been happening since the SIP was put into place here in the district. You know, when I think about it from transformation work, it's really in so many different areas, and yet they're connected, but each one of them represents such a body of that work. So I was incredibly proud of the team knowing how hard they're working behind all of this to get those pieces to happen. We then, we did have a really interesting conversation about chronic absenteeism, because the department has put out a dashboard and an update, and they normally do that, but they did this in the March timeframe, sorry, late April timeframe. And so we kind of had a bit of a discussion, particularly about secondary education and what we're seeing, you know, here and nationally and statewide, which is this persistent trend of chronic absenteeism for our high schoolers. And then really kind of talked a little bit about what some of those might be. So for me, that kind of came away, you know, even more so making sure we're communicating out all the efforts that we're doing in this particular area. The other was, you know, a question around seeing disparity in the schools' performance, and I think that was an opportunity to talk about our transformation schools. And really, you know, with Director Saban, like just the really solid work that we're looking at in the transformation schools, but really trying to calibrate across the district: equitable literacy, strong, use of high-quality instructional materials, and on the, you know, on the instructional side, using the regional support model to make sure as we go into every classroom, we have a common set of things we're looking for to see those materials being used in the instruction. And so I think it was a chance to really reflect that this is about addressing the pockets of where we're seeing the lower performance, but it's also about lifting the entire district. And so there were just some things I had an opportunity to talk about and questions they asked that just caused me to think about that and how we need to work to share that out and to communicate that, not only among our body here in school committee, but in the general public.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That was helpful. And I look forward to it being a deeper presentation where we go through the actual items on it and the progress towards each of the pieces, but that was very helpful. Thank you.
I have a question, just a follow-up to that. So what is DESI thinking in terms of maybe, one, what is the trend of chronic absenteeism? Are we seeing that it's stabilizing, or are we seeing that it's increasing? And then has DESI been thinking more around statewide task forces around this? I know they share resources, but...
Yeah. So they didn't, they didn't mention that specifically, but I think the trend is definitely coming down. And, you know, and I think it's, you know, it's about intentional focus, you know, making sure that parents are aware, students are aware of the correlation of being in school and performance, being in school and being engaged. So I think there's been a lot of intentionality that the state-seeded grants to the districts, right? We were a beneficiary of that, to be able to really kind of work on this. And obviously, for us, we're working on the campaign continually, first as pilot, but with the goal to roll it out for next year. So even among our numbers, we saw some drop. But I'm not ready to celebrate, because when we still have, you know, high 20s in the high schools, right? That's grades that kids need to be in school and making, you know, making forward progress toward graduation, toward their job skills, toward early college. So, you know, I think there's definitely some promise there. I think the state felt, as they reported out, that there was definitely some things to celebrate statewide. But for us, we just want to stay very laser-focused on this to drive these to not just pre-pandemic, but my goal would be the lowest we've seen in BPS.
Just a follow-up question on that. Is it, is it just then, like outreach work? Or is there programmatic changes? Because I think, like, probably, we've talked about this, like, both are true.
Yeah.
The school for good school and not get forced to go.
Exactly. Thank you for that. This is exactly what I spoke about, was that when we're approaching it, particularly, you know, at the secondary level where kids can vote with their feet, which is what we see happen. The why has to be there for students. And I think post-pandemic, it caused everybody to think about their why, and students are no different than that. At the younger grades, parents are much more, you know, have voice to that. But as kids get older, they do have their feet to make different choices. So for us, the early college work, specifically the career work, I think one of the things we heard about, you know, from all of the scholarship winners, was many of them were involved in, you know, internships, career training, skills, skill-building, career connections, and that gave them relevance to their learning. You know, that's, and then they can see how to apply that when they graduate. So that's why we're working so urgently in the high schools to get those programs up and running, right? And then it's also really why, for those students who have become off track, either by age or credit or interest, you know, it's important for us to have a robust alternative education system to, for students to be called back to and plug into, that's going to allow them that possibility, not only of graduation, that's bare minimum, but of going on then and seeing their dreams fulfilled in college and in career. And so that's why we also are working very hard to redesign some of the alt-ed and get early college and the career embedded where it hasn't been in the past.
Just one last question. Is there any correlation, as we're talking about master facilities today, between schools that are under-enrolled and higher levels of chronic absenteeism? Like, I'm imagining the school you brought up, Dr. Alkins, a few weeks ago with 34%, 33%, a 33% capacity. Like, I don't know, if I was a kid, I can imagine being like, "That doesn't feel like a place that's sort of exciting and fun to be at." But that could just be all speculative. Have we looked at those trends? And is that part of the driving conversation around mergers?
So yes, I think when we get to the slides tonight, there's a slide in particular that really underscores concentrations in our open enrollment schools, which also happen to overlap with transformation status, which can also overlap with under-enrollment or more administrative placement, or the lies for students. It's also for under-enrolled schools that tend to be very small. As we've talked about, it's very hard unless you create intentional partnerships for them. It's very hard for them with the resources they have to have what a larger, comprehensive school would have. So I think that for us right now, as we're working through this, we're also very deliberately partnering, partners with some of those under-middle, smaller schools, because every day counts for every student. So it's not as if we wait for a year, two years, or three years. We have to make sure we're putting that programming in place.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I do have one more, actually. I'm sorry, and I apologize. We brought it up last time. Is there any other, just an update from you on what's happening at City Council with the budget? Is there an update for us, anything we should be aware of?
Sure. So we have, we've had, I believe, five different hearings around various topics, and we kind of break them up, and our staff represent. I've gone to the kickoff one. And then we had had the pre-meeting, which I, again, compliment Councilor Rao, who is the head of Ways and Means, for having that foresight to do that, because I think that opened up the dialogue with the budget. And so that's since carried into the hearings. We actually tomorrow have a three-hour hearing, you know, where we'll take a variety of topics. I'll be at that hearing as well.
But are there any concerns we should be aware of or places within the budget that we suspect will move as a result of the work of City Council?
I think it's fairly early to say that. I don't, I'm not hearing that. I think by having that deeper conversation initially, we were able to get at some of the things that we knew the councilors wanted. And year to year, it's all, you know, like, at least in my experience before and now, you know, the councilors have particular areas of interest. And so we work very hard to engage with them, to, you know, have them be partners with us in the work as well, much like all of you do. You know, you have areas of interest. So I think that's going very collaboratively, and I think, you know, whatever questions remain, we'll get at the hearing tomorrow over a better sense, right, after that. But the sense I have right now is, no, I don't, I don't see that right now.
Perfect.
Thank you all. I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Chair, a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matter are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up for virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 30 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please take your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. We will begin this evening with our in-person speakers. Our first group of speakers are John Mudd, Alisa Hunter, Jonathan Berry, Jacary Martin, and Mary McLaughlin. John Mudd?
This is Waring. Good evening. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. I would hope that you, the district, and all of us would look to find lessons in this first experience with proposals under the Long-Term Facilities Plan. Some preliminary ideas. I must say that after all the hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on facilities assessments and millions on a supposed master plan, what we got last week were proposals for the grand total of one merger of a small early learning center in three grade configurations. Many of us have protested against this piecemeal approach. Where is the overall master plan? Where are the proposals that meet the challenges of this moment? I should also add that in none of these proposals was there any analysis of the impact on enrollment or the budget. But critically important, the process used in presenting these proposals to the affected school communities does set a precedent for community engagement. And this precedent is totally inadequate. If you are at all serious about community engagement, consider this. The four affected communities, school communities, each received a letter describing the proposals with only two to three days' notice for a one-hour virtual meeting in which the community would be told what had been decided for them. At one meeting, I counted two people. At another, four. The BPS approach in these meetings is to inform school communities of decisions that have been made for the schools. They are not asking for community participation in developing the plans, only for their implementation. It is hard to believe that this is what the school committee wants, but you seem to be allowing it to happen. Do you know what genuine community engagement really means?
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Your time is up.
Thank you very much. And I plead with you, don't let this precedent stand. Say that you want more genuine engagement for future proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Alisa Hunter?
Good evening. My name is Alisa Hunter. I'm a resident of Brockton-
I'm a resident of Brockton, Massachusetts, after living in the city of Boston for over forty years. I'm the vice chair of the Board, Board of Trustees for Boston Day and Evening Academy and the mother of a BPS graduate. My professional background is in mental health. This is the reason I volunteer my time at BDA, a school that serves the most marginalized students in our district by prioritizing their physical and emotional well-being. At the core of trauma-informed care is the recognition of historical trauma and acknowledging that white supremacy permeates all of our lives. For the past five years, the BDA community has been split apart with two-thirds of students located at the Phyllis Wheatley Campus and the other third temporarily in the Timotee Building, half a mile away, but also in Nubian Square. We were recently informed that we needed to vacate the Timotee by the end of June with the option to move temporarily to the Gavin Building in South Boston. Let me be clear. South Boston is a community where the historical trauma of busting, busing still permeates the memories and experiences of the city's black and brown communities. Making decisions about access to education in this community without including BDA's voice in the discussion perpetuates a divisive oppressive culture. Please provide a clear plan for how BDA
Thirty seconds.
can come together as a single school once again. Do not displace the sixty students, most of whom are black and brown young men commonly failed by the education system. Let them remain at the Timotee until there is a viable plan that centers on affirmative nurturing education, which is the defining value of trauma-informed care. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jonathan Berry.
My name is Jonathan Berry, and I'm the treasurer on the board of Boston Day and Evening Academy and a member of the school's development committee. I'm the director of portfolio reporting at OXX Private Debt located here in Boston. I'm a resident for the past twenty-one years, currently residing in the West End. I've chosen to volunteer my time because I live in a professional world of abundance. And to ever create equity, I know that the students of BDA need and deserve access to that abundance. The committee's decision impacts upward economic mobility and the critical need of access to high-paying career paths in Boston, thus accessing said abundance. We lean into the vibrancy of Nubian Square with partnerships that provide everything from an in-school health clinic to internships in the green jobs sector. BDA graduates approximately fifty students a year, many of whom attended multiple other BPS high schools prior to coming to BDA. Those graduates turn around and invest millions more dollars of lifetime earnings back into this community compared to their potential earnings had they dropped out. I'm in the field of investing. In my line of work, companies invest their resources with the expectation of exponential growth and return on that investment. Where companies choose to invest their money speaks volumes about their perceived value proposition. BDA deserves an equal investment from this city. As board treasurer and member of the executive committee, our team has ensured financial viability of BDA. We have made hard decisions around reducing expenses while investing in areas that will increase income, especially as we experience the conclusion of federal COVID relief money. This year, the school committee decided to move the O'Brien to West Roxbury, and the community responded. These exam students, students from whom this city watches out for, values, uh, and values their results and their outcomes. Well, BDA also is about results and outcomes, but it can't solely be about speed to graduation and number of seats filled. Boston will feel the impact of divesting in the most vulnerable population of students in this district. Therefore, the BDA community is also responding. To reiterate, this is a matter of resources and who the city just chooses to invest in. The Timotee Building is currently housing seventy students. We implore you to consider who these students are when you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacory Martin.
My name is Cory Martin. I live in Mattapin, and I'm representing Boston Day and Evening Academy. I'm an alumnus of BDA, and I just graduated in April, twenty twenty-four. As you likely know, BDA does school differently. And having our graduations, having four graduations per year is just one of those differences. This year, I'll be one of fifty graduates from our school. I understand that BPS has told us we need to move out the James P. Timotee Building with a few weeks' notice, and I want to speak on what stability at school actually means. Throughout my academic career in Boston Public Schools, I've experienced two closures that are very inconvenient to my academic trajectory. One being the William Barton Rogers Middle School in my sixth grade year, and two being Urban Science Academy located within the West Roxbury Education Complex during my sophomore year of high school. I'm not aware of all the factors that go into running the entire school system. The one thing I do know is there is no school system without students. I've personally watched many students and friends drop out of school due to these closures and attempted relocations. Asking for a comforted space for students to explore their academic and creative endeavors is asking for the bare minimum, especially when we're dealing with communities of color. The BDA two-point-nothing community is sacred because it's located in the heart of Boston, giving us an advantage to take with the learning and actively build and connect with community. Kicking students and staff out the Timotee without a clear plan causes a disconnect with our mission and values. It's also important for students who attend classes at both campuses to be in proximity of one another or work in that equal, work can potentially affect their progress. This fall, I'll be attending Hampshire College in Amherst, Massachusetts with a full ride as a James Baldwin Scholar. I'm an artist with a business mind and advocate for equality. The BDA, the BDA community has taught me not to just be a student in the classroom, but a student of life. What makes this community so special to me is everyone has a voice and everyone's story deserves to be heard, as demonstrated within this moment.
Your time is up.
Focus on stability. Those that follow my footsteps will need that, and they definitely deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mary McLaughlin.
And the members of the committee and Superintendent Skipper. I'm Mary Catherine McLaughlin, and I live in Dorchester. I was born and raised there. I'm here representing my daughter, who is a four-year-old student with autism at the Henderson Inclusion School. She was approved for thirty hours of ABA services by our insurer. At my first IEP meeting, Neve was offered one hour a day of ABA services from BPS. I rejected the proposal with, along with the admission of occupational therapy. We reconvened to discuss the rejected portions. They denied ABA and added occupational therapy to our IEP. At this time, teachers told us that there was a huge safety concern for her choking incidence and potential for other medical ingest, issues from ingesting items. I continue to ask why Neve is not qualifying for any additional ABA services. The BCBA at the Henderson School stated that since COVID, things have changed at BPS. And if you want more ABA, you can go to an ABA strand. You can go to a sub-separate classroom. And I stated, my daughter will be in an inclusion classroom. And the law that services should come to the child, no matter the placement. During the same time, I've asked for a one-to-one trained in ABA due to the increase in Neve putting items in her mouth. BPS refused my request and stated that we would need to take data. The data was supposed to start collection on April fourth. We received an N two letter from this BPS saying that there would be no additional ABA. I filed for mediation on April eleventh, but weeks went by with no response from BPS. Before April fourth meeting, I required that we had our meeting. I was told that there was no meeting because there, no data had been collected over a two-month time period. During the meeting, on May fourteenth, the data collected was, that was discussed first by the co-teachers, reporting that Neve was regressing in toileting and requires nurse assistance now, prompting with hand over hand, but the BCBA reported that she had made progress. That we asked for the five steps, and the BCBA could not explain what the five steps were. The co-team chairperson was in the room collecting data for Neve. And while the teachers removed a magnet from her mouth, the, the chairperson at the Henderson School did not collect this data and write it down. They omitted it. I asked for a safety plan. The BCBA told me that the safety plan was there.
Send that by email?
The BCBA said that it was in place. I have never seen a safety plan. Her occupational therapist did not see a safety plan, and her teachers did not see a safety plan. Her parents did not also sign for the safety plan. The BCBA said she then had a conversation, and they apologized for the mistake. Only after reaching out to Julie Pandolfi, the AD, now we can go to mediation. Neve is now regressing in toileting, self-injurious behaviors, and placing non-edible items in her mouth. My daughter is entitled to support and services that requires to meet her unique needs and to keep her safe at school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next group of speakers are Jacqueline Rodriguez, Peggy Wiesenberg, and Deirdre Manning. Jacqueline Rodriguez.
Good evening, school committee members and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Dr. Jacqueline Rodriguez, and I have worked for twenty-three years as a bilingual school psychologist in Boston. With a twenty-one million dollar investment in mental health next year, BPS has chosen to cut seven school psychologists from the Behavioral Health Department. In my twenty-three years here, our department has never been fully funded. And it's always needing more bilingual school psychologists because we are considered hard to recruit. We need at least one hundred nineteen school psychologists and should be placed full-time in each school like nurses and social workers. This is what our students and families need. The impact of losing seven positions will impact at least three thousand of our BPS students. Being full-time at the Charles Sumner Elementary School for seven years has allowed me, I've been there two years full-time, and I've been there a total of seven years. But it's allowed me to conduct social groups, teach social emotional learning in classrooms where the students are beginner English language learners and assist, assistant emergency crisis, uh, assistant emergency crisis team. I also conduct special education eligibility assessments, provide counseling, and conduct suicide and threat assessments at least once a month. So our students and families need access to more, not less, school psychologists. And I hope you will consider that, um, in, for next year because we are, uh, moving to an inclusion, uh, program here at my school where, where we're going to have more students on IEPs, not less, next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Peggy Wiesenberg.
Good evening, and thank you. I am the parent of three Boston Public School grads who went from K to twelve. I'm testifying on the proposal to combine the ELC West and the Hennigan School, two schools located in the same building in Jamaica Plain where I live. My son attended the ELC West the same years my daughter attended the fourth and fifth grade at the Hennigan School. I was on the school site council at the ELC. I realize the city is trying to save money and cut administrative costs, but I'm here to urge you to vote no. Early learning centers offer before and after-school care operating from seven-thirty in the morning to four-thirty in the afternoon. They're free and do not charge a fee for the hours beyond the BTU contracted day. I was so grateful for the ELC. I was working two jobs. I had children in three different schools. Mid-year, I was admitted to the hospital, but I knew my son would be well-cared-for in the ELC. We were fortunate to have a dedicated principal, Valerie Gooms, and a dedicated secretary, Joanie, at the ELC West. Eleanor Perry was the principal at the Hennigan, a large school with many specialists, including art, music, gym, cafeteria, custodial staff. The Hennigan started school and, uh, later and the ELC, um, and then the ELC, and it ended earlier. At the ELC, the administrative assistant received the buses at seven-thirty in the morning and made sure students got home to school at the end of the day. The ELC paid a certified teacher to be in charge of the after-school program, which offered a rich array of learning activities, not just babysitting. The principal is directly responsible for the building. This means if kids are not picked up on time and remain in the building after the teachers finish their contracted hours.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesenberg. Your time is up.
Has to stay until the parent or caretaker shows up. Uh, just one more sentence. This means that if something happens like an accident and the nurse has left, the principal and or administrative assistant may have to call for an ambulance and must call the parents. I realize the system is trying to downsize its footprint and merge schools. The share of building has some logic, but please do not eliminate the ELC West. Thank you.
Next speaker is Deirdre Manning.
My name is Deirdre Manning. I'm a Dorchester resident, single parent of two minor children, BPS parent and a charter school parent. I've spoken to you before. I've pointed out to you the stark differences between a tier-seven home in a less desirable area of Dorchester where refugees live and a brownstone on Beacon Street in the Back Bay. I've said before that it's ludicrous that there's such a wide difference in a particular tier. I've identified the American Community Survey in non-decade census years as a flawed methodology for determining tiers where you survey only two-point-five percent of the population. Here's additional data, which I will provide to the school committee members that shows another, what I consider to be flaw of the tier, um, process. So if you have a difference in a socioeconomic score within a tier, you've got tiers one through five, essentially a two for a socioeconomic score, and you've got tiers six through eight at a two-point-four. There are many students in tier six, seven, and eight who are disenfranchised by this process. They are excluded, some would argue targeted for exclusion by this process. I literally don't understand why so many parents and other students have come before you to complain about this flawed process. A simple fix would be allocating the number of seats per tier by the number of applicants in each tier. You shouldn't have a virtual universal acceptance rate in tiers one through five and low forty percent for children who live in tiers six, seven, and eight. I am likely moving my fourth-grade BPS student to a charter school. We like the school that she's at now after being, um, having to leave the Henderson community. But there's a clear path to a quality school if I move her there. If I leave her on BPS.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
In two years, I'll probably be in the same position with my next child excluded from an educational opportunity. The time is now to fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now transition to virtual testimonies. Please make sure you're signing to Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins, followed by Lily Rodriguez, Ruby Reyes, and Cheryl Buckman. Robert Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins declined, so Lily Rodriguez.
Hello. Hi, my name is Liliani Rodriguez. I live in Dorchester. I'm a senior at Fenway High School, and I'm attending Northeastern University next year.
Lily, could you please turn on your camera?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Of course. Um, I just wanted to take the time to talk about Up Academy Dorchester. Up Academy Dorchester has impacted me in so many different ways. It has taught me how to become a leader, as well as how to respect others and be myself. UAD is a school that stays connected to their students even after they go. For example, a staffer who has always stayed connected to me is May T. Penya. She has always looked out for me and has asked if I ever needed anything. She is currently helping me out by providing an internship at the school where I help her with office work as well as assist K-one teachers. I am currently making goodie bags for the students because I felt the urge to do so after having an incredible six-week internship at the school. The, the kids were so lovely and welcoming, as well as all the UAD staff. So thank you so much for listening. I just wanted to take time. So, thank you so much for listening. I just wanted to take time to share about my middle school. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to try again with Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Jenkins is no longer in the meeting, so we will go to our next speaker. Ruby Reyes.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruby Reyes. I'm the executive director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. Educators and families were notified on May 9th what would be happening with their school closure, merger, and process. This has been the community engagement process. This process does not adhere to the steps of the community engagement outlined in the Racial Equity Planning Tool. The tool asks the following questions: How does this proposal impact the students and communities with the greatest needs? How will this proposal address racism and close opportunity gaps? How have Black, Latinx, EL, Special Ed, and economically disadvantaged students, families, and staff, and other key internal and external stakeholders been engaged in considering and shaping the proposal? What has our engagement told us about the potential positive and/or negative impacts of the proposal for different groups? And how is this proposal might, how will this proposal produce or perpetuate racial inequity? What are the potential unintended consequences? Is the plan realistic and adequately resourced? How will we ensure accountability, including evaluating and communicating results? School communities were not included in shaping the proposal, nor was their engagement with these school communities to learn about the potential impacts. Mayor Wu and superintendent Skipper's staff have only been clear that their version of community engagement and the Equity Tool is to inform school communities how they will manage the closure, merger, or reconfiguration. School communities with larger numbers of Black, Latino, EL students are also being pushed aside, including the Blackstone and Mel King Academies. None of these questions were answered in the presentation. We have been told repeatedly that the Equity Tool was a through line. The Equity Tool was not used and is not a through line. School committee member Hernandez summed up the reason why you should not rubber stamp building decisions until you receive a plan. He said at the last meeting, "There are certain families in the system who will not be impacted in all of this, mine included. My kid goes to a Tier 1 school. It's not going to be closed. There is a lot of damage we can do without a clear plan." This is not-
Thank you. Your time is up.
...a plan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a parent to a BPS student who has special needs. He's a 5th grader at the Dever. I'm also a member of SAMPOSA and a longtime resident of South Boston. I'm here because I'm deeply invested in the well-being of our students and their rights to a high-quality education. As you know, the school my son attends went into receivership in 2014, even when the Dever community rallied for not to. The Dever lost 15% of its Latina teachers in a state-of-the-art dual-language program. And now, with even more budget cuts, the Dever is expected to lose 10% of its full-time teachers and staff in an SEI program. I ask if the superintendent and school committee has pushed back against having this program pulled, or did you look the other way? Do the parents at the Dever even have a say in what happens at their school? According to Desi's own record, ELs at the Dever in grades 3 through 6 outperform compared to other BPS schools statewide in math and ELA. Haven't our children and educators suffered enough in this process? Why are we playing tug-of-war? Why can't BPS stand up and show a little bit more backbone? Where is the honesty? Shouldn't we be investing in our children's future by adding more teachers and programs like an inclusion program done correctly? Mental health services, fully-staffed libraries, and better pay for our teachers? I'm going to leave with this, a closing for my son. I love going to school and seeing all of my friends and teachers. I don't want to see a day where my school closes and we're all separated. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are, we'll need the support from interpreter, Maria Mejia, Sonia Medina, Paula Ortiz, and Zimel Rodriguez Lamarche. Maria Mejia, our Spanish interpreter will help us with that. Maria is not signed in. Sonia Medina will be our next speaker.
Sí. Buenas tardes a todos y a todas. Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Comité escolar, autoridades correspondientes. Gracias por la oportunidad.
Un segundo. Our Spanish interpreter?
Hello?
Yeah, un segundo.
Sí, gracias.
Yeah, you can talk with him.
We'll have to start over. Maybe the other interpreter spoke something, but I can't interpret. Just tell him he had to proceed. Something happened with the other interpreter, but he'll be happy to chat with him. Forward, pause, and I'll interpret.
Okay, gracias. Hola, buenas tardes. Comité escolar y autoridades correspondientes. Gracias por la oportunidad.
Good afternoon, school committee. Good afternoon, the correspondent, authorities, and leadership, and thank you very much for the opportunity you gave me today.
Mi nombre es Sonia Medina. Vivo en Southend, y mis hijos van a la escuela pública de Boston.
Good afternoon. I live in the Southend, and my kids go to the Boston Public Schools.
Soy madre y mentora en la escuela O'Shaughnessy, y tengo algunas preocupaciones.
And my mother and my mentor, I do have my kids at the Orchard Gardens, and my mentor there, and I do have some concerns.
Me enteré en una reunión que iban a cerrar 48 escuelas, pero ya no serán cerradas.
But when the truth was, I was told that the school was going to close, but apparently that is not the case any longer.
Será bueno saber qué plan tienen para estas escuelas que ya no serán cerradas.
So, it will be ideal to know what plan is in place for those schools that will not be closed.
Después de la pandemia, la escuela O'Shaughnessy necesita más higiene, y la limpieza debe ser parte de la prioridad.
After the pandemic crisis, cleaning must be a priority. That particular school needs better cleaning. That's a top priority.
También veo que en mi escuela se necesita personal de limpieza, ya que tiene muchos alumnos que necesitan ser mejores cuidados.
Cleaning staff has to be allocated, though, because there are many students that need better care. Cleaning is an important part of it.
Dentro de las reparaciones, queremos un patio más seguro y más higienizado de las plagas.
When it comes to repairs, we need a better public space for the kids. They better, like I'm saying, that is, has all the procedures, so bacteria might be, to prevent infections, to prevent the fad that's there for the kids.
Yo como madre tengo esta preocupación entre otras. Comité escolar, por favor, escucha nuestras súplicas. Muchas gracias.
Doesn't bother you? As you heard, I have many concerns, and I ask you to, and begging you, please hear our concerns, and thank you very much for allowing me to participate today.
Muchas gracias. Next speaker is Zimel Rodriguez Lamarche, who will also need Spanish support.
Good afternoon, Lamarche. Well, pass our little profile.
Buenas tardes, miembros del comité escolar.
Good afternoon, members of the school committee.
Gracias por darme la oportunidad de expresar mi inquietud.
Thank you very much for that.
Mi nombre es Zimel Rodriguez. Vivo en Roxbury, y mi hija estudia en la escuela Blackstone, y soy voluntaria en esta escuela. Gracias por considerar la decisión de no cerrar tantas escuelas por sus reconstrucciones. Me gustaría saber cuál es la planificación que tienen para la reparación de estas escuelas, ya que decidieron mantenerlas abiertas. Una de estas escuelas es la Blackstone Elementary School, donde soy voluntaria, y como ya le dije, mi hija estudia allí.
That's what I was saying before, so I can't interpret. The other channel doesn't work. Sorry. Paula Reyes, please continue the interpretation. I'm going to present to Rachel. Forward, sir.
I have to start over?
Please, because there's a problem with the interpretation. If you know, you can start again. If you don't, don't worry. You can start over, please.
Okay.
You can start again.
Buenas tardes, miembro del comité escolar.
Good afternoon, members of the school committee.
Gracias por darme la oportunidad de expresar aquí mi inquietud.
Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to express my concerns here today.
Mi nombre es Zimel Rodriguez. Vivo en la comunidad de Roxbury, y mi hija estudia en la escuela Blackstone, donde soy voluntaria.
Zimel Rodriguez is my name. I live in the Roxbury community, and I am a volunteer at the Blackstone School where my daughter studies.
Gracias por considerar la decisión de no cerrar tantas escuelas para sus reconstrucciones.
Thank you very much for deciding not to close many of the schools when you're thinking about the different constructions and long-term planning.
Me gustaría saber cuál es la planificación que tienen para la reparación de estas escuelas, ya que decidieron mantenerlas abiertas.
So, considering the fact that the school will remain open, I was wondering what type of plan was it that you guys have in place and what type of repairs will take place there for those that will be kept open?
Una de estas escuelas es la Escuela Blackstone Elementary School, donde soy voluntaria y mi hija estudia en esa escuela.
I'm a volunteer at the Blackstone School. My daughter goes there. One of the schools in reference that I'm referring to is the Blackstone Elementary School.
Ustedes prometieron dar fondos a esta escuela. Me gustaría saber qué ha pasado con este dinero, qué acciones o medidas están tomando para comenzar a trabajar en ella.
One more second.
So, there was a promise that some funding was going to be provided, some money was going to be allocated. I was wondering what type of actions will take place for that purpose?
Esta escuela necesita mucha renovación, ya que tiene mucho tiempo de construida.
This particular school needs a lot of renovation because it's been built for a long time. It needs a lot of renovation.
Por ejemplo, la maravillosa piscina que tiene no se puede usar por grietas que tiene.
So, there's a wonderful swimming pool there that cannot be used because there are many cracks in that swimming pool.
Hay varias paredes con huecos.
Come on.
Hay varias paredes que tienen hueco y filtraciones.
There's some, there are walls in it. There's some filtrations there in some of the walls at their school.
Esto me preocupa bastante. Como madre, me gustaría ser tomada en cuenta en las planificaciones y decisiones.
So, that is very concerning to me, and as a mother, I was wondering what type of actions will take place to provide gravity to this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias, señora. I'll stop.
Our next speaker, Ikram Hamadi, will need support from an Arabic interpreter.
Yes.
Ikram? Please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Ikram. If you can, speak a short word so we can translate. Thank you. Thank you, Ikram. Open the microphone.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I am telling her to open the mic.
Thank you.
Ikram, open the microphone. I can't hear you.
Yeah, so let's try our next speaker, and then we can come back to Ikram.
We'll go to the next speaker, and then we can continue.
Our next group of speakers is Sarah Horstli, Suleka Soto, and Elise Pechter. Sarah Horstli?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Horstli. I'm in Jamaica Plain. I'm a BPS parent and co-founder of SAMPOSA, BPS Families for COVID Safety. I appreciate the city's efforts to improve school facilities, but you must make fundamental changes to ensure a transparent, equitable, and democratic process. To highlight one issue, 96 of our schools lack modern ventilation systems. Without adequate fresh air, learning is impaired, and students and staff are more likely to catch respiratory diseases. I have learned that my child's school will have its ventilation upgraded. That's great, but what about the remaining 95 schools without adequate ventilation? When we asked this question at recent workshops, district staff told us that ventilation upgrades will be part of every new build and major renovation. Okay, but when? How are you deciding which schools get prioritized? How are you incorporating racial equity in those decisions? This issue points to three problems with the way that BPS is conducting facilities planning. First, there is no comprehensive long-term facilities plan, leaving us completely in the dark on the future of our schools. A vague rubric followed up by piecemeal decisions is not adequate. The full impact of a proposal cannot be evaluated without the context of a comprehensive plan. Despite stated commitments, the district is also not sufficiently prioritizing racial equity. For example, the written plan mentions a desire to return to a neighborhood school model that contradicts the guarantee order and would exacerbate inequity. Finally, Mayor Wu and BPS continue to make decisions in a top-down manner rather than partnering with school communities instead of a chasm of a community-
Our next speaker is Suleka Soto.
Hello. My name is Suleka Soto. I am a BPS parent, Southend resident, and Beja member. I'm here to address the issues surrounding the facilities planning and the lack of follow-up on promises made to the Melvin H. Kings Academy, formerly known as the McKinley Schools. According to Boston.gov, in 2022, BPS launched a program and study for renovated facilities, working with SAM Architecture and Design Civic. Mayor Wu proposed $20.3 million in the FY '24, this year's capital plan, to begin design services. As part of the SIP, the McKinley Working Group was charged with guiding the needs assessment phase of the building. However, that group did not continue to meet. BPS has not followed up on premises made to the school community or the state. How is this work supposed to move forward if the working group has not continued to meet? Where are the updates and transparency for the community? This lack of action and communication is unacceptable. Despite the name change to the Melvin H. Kings Southend Academy, the school-to-prison pipeline persists. Was the name change just for publicity? It is deeply disrespectful to name a school- It is deeply disrespectful to name a school after Mel King, a legendary leader, without making transformative changes. Mel King once said, quote, "It seems to me there's a gap in our future. It has to do with access to tools and resources that allow you to move up educationally and economically." Yet students, primarily Black and Latino boys, are dumped into the school and met with metal detectors, random searches, and cameras instead of access to a gym, cafeteria, science lab, and library. Instead of receiving therapeutic interventions, they are often detained and police are called when they have meltdown. BPS needs to give students at the Mel King the resources, access, and building to support the students and the school to become a real therapeutic school.
Muchas gracias.
Not just a dumping ground for...
Next speaker is Elise Pechter.
Hi, my name is Elise Pechter. I live in Jamaica Plain and have a grandchild in the Boston Public Schools. I want to comment on two things: the failure to address school facilities' needs, especially ventilation, and the failures to allow families to be part of the design and decision-making of the school improvement plans. The Boston Globe had a front-page article today that highlighted some of the failings of the district's need to improve our schools, but it was overly gentle in its assessment. They called BPS progress "slow." There have been dozens of promises and plans to upgrade school facilities, which would take care of these old decrepit and failing buildings. In 2022, BPS wrote, "Most of our buildings are not meeting students' most basic needs." There have been millions of dollars spent on facility audits and indoor air quality measurement, and the 10-year-old plan Build BPS was launched but has not resulted in improvements. Then, 70% of schools had deficient poor or no ventilation, resulting in poor indoor air quality. These problems have not been fixed, and on a day like today, with high ozone and indoor air quality and an outdoor air quality warning, the school is at risk, especially kids with asthma. Now, even with continuing state oversight and millions spent on consultants and measurement, we only have modest grade reconfigurations planned for 2025, 2026. The Globe article stated that BPS met a state deadline to submit a plan in December. If that plan exists, the school community has not seen it. Further, they state that the state commented that Boston lacked a timeline.
Muchas gracias, your time is up. Thank you. We will try Ikram again. Ikram Hamadi.
Hola.
We can hear you.
Mi nombre es Ikram y vivo en Roxbury. Mi nombre es Ikram y vivo en Roxbury. Tengo tres hijos que van a la escuela Blackstone. And I have three children go to Blackstone School. También trabajo en la escuela como mentor de padre. I work in the school also as a volunteer. Por lo que hago aquí, yo sé bien cómo cambia la escuela. And because I work here, so I know how the school is doing. ¿Cómo cambia la escuela desde dentro y cuáles son las cosas que necesitan arreglar? How the school from inside and what are the things needed to be renovated? En la vivienda, especialmente en la parte de la chimera, cuando se deshace el aire, entra el agua de los rascacielos. The windows, especially in winter when it rains, the water goes through the windows to the inside of the classroom. También fuera de la escuela, cuando se deshace el aire, no hay nada que cargue a los niños del aire. Also outside school, there are no shades which can protect the children from being wetted. Así que además de eso, pues es algo que necesitan muchas arreglos. And there are more other things needed to be renovated. Se han realizado varias solicitudes desde hace mucho tiempo, con cinco millones de dólares para arreglar la escuela Blackstone. We heard that there was $5 million for renovating Blackstone School. Pero esta escuela está dirigida a edificaciones que necesitan arreglar, y no vimos ningún plan. Although this school was in the plan for the renovation, but we didn't see any actions made till now. Y al final, nosotros solicitamos un plan de mejora claro y estable para la escuela Blackstone, gracias. In the end, we wanted to hear a clear plan for renovating the school, and thank you so much. Muchas gracias, Simel. Thank you for listening to me.
Muchas gracias.
Sorry, could we get her testimony written? I just really couldn't hear a lot of that.
Could we please get your testimony written? Ahmed, could you please translate and interpret that?
Sí, Ikram, es posible que el que te hablé le dé una respuesta, porque el sonido dice que no estaba claro, algunos no escucharon. Si es posible, dé una respuesta.
No me escucharon, pero tú eres quien está traduciendo, es decir... Okay. Ella dijo que si enviara, yo interpretaba, así que le dije que enviara y nos frustraríamos.
Envíalo a mí en árabe y lo enviamos para traducción.
Okay.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you. Our next group of speakers are Edith Basile, Ellen Dun Dong Ring, Anne Chin-Chilla de George, and Christine Downing. Edith Basile.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Suleka Soto, for your fiery testimony. Continuing with the McKinley, if you walk into McKinley schools, you are greeted with metal detectors, cameras, and random searches within a rundown, physically miserable place of racial segregation. There are no library, science labs, cafeteria, no gym, no clubs, athletics, or team sports, making McKinley schools an academic dead zone that robs the mental, emotional, spiritual hope of its primarily Black and Latino students with disabilities and complex histories of trauma. Not surprising, 2/3 of the students stopped attending over the last three years. Now with 112 staff and 139 students, the staff-student ratio is about 1:1. However, chronic absenteeism is about 80%. Fifty years ago, Boston's desegregation and Black students at the McKinley schools continued to be pushed into the school-to-prison pipeline at the highest rate. What has this administration done about it? They placed a legendary Black leader's name on McKinley schools while maintaining segregation, isolation, and harsh disciplinary practices, which makes the name change a cruel form of racial mockery and injustice. Where is the outrage? I challenge each school committee member to spend a day in these dilapidated, outdated, lifeless buildings where BPS is now installing more cameras. Why? Where's the action for restructuring and building? The city of Boston owes an education debt to Black students and families of McKinley schools in all across the district. Instead of paying this educational debt, BPS has put McKinley on the back of the bus called "planning phase." We need a plan and action now. There is no educational...
Our next speaker is not here. Ellen is not here, so we will go with Anne Chin-Chilla de George. Anne Chin-Chilla de George, could you please accept the prompt? We will go with Christine Downing. Christine Downing.
Christine Downing tiene la palabra, ahora pasa el micrófono.
Christine Downing.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, you can start.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Skipper and members of the committee. My name is Christine Downing and I have been a teacher at the West Zone Early Learning Center for 24 years. Seventeen of those years I taught first grade, and for the past seven years I have taught kindergarten one. The West Zone Early Learning Center is a very special school. One of the main reasons is the families that we serve, some of whom are experiencing Boston Public Schools for the very first time. As a small school with the youngest learners, we are able to build strong relationships and partnerships with our families. I feel so fortunate that I am able, since the school is so small, we have classrooms, doors that lead to the outside, and I am able to greet many of my families every single day. So we get to know them personally and we're able to really engage them in their child's learning, and that is so important for the early learners. Another important part of the West Zone is the group of early childhood professionals that make up our staff. Many of the staff have worked for years in early childhood. We have dedicated our careers to laying the foundation of education for our youngest learners in our very special little school. I ask that you do not approve the closing of the West Zone Early Learning Center. Please allow the children of Region Four to continue to have access to the specialized education and early learning that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Rob Garrison is not here, so we are going with Meg Miquita, Agustina M., and Levon Martinez. Meg is not here either. Agustina M. Sorry, now we have... Okay, let's try with Anne de George. Anne, you can please start. Okay, we will try with Meg Miquita. Please, you can start.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Meg Miquita and I have been a teacher in BPS for 37 years and I have spent 35 of those years teaching at the ELC West as a K-0, K-1 inclusion teacher. I know that inclusion is a hot topic at the moment. The West Zone has been an inclusion school since our inception in 1989. I am here to tell you what an early childhood school is all about. It is about our youngest learners having the advantage of early childhood professionals who understand developmentally appropriate practices. It is about our youngest students learning that they have a voice and that their voices matter and are heard. It is about giving our youngest learners an opportunity to learn by doing, to experience by living, and to become socially responsible in an appropriate and safe environment. It is a place where all staff know all the children by name and the students are all of our kids. It is a place where students are met at their developmental level and grow and blossom from there. It is a place that builds the foundation for all the years of learning ahead. In other words, it is a magical place where the love of learning in school begins. I understand the logistics of a school within a school, but the definition of an early childhood center is very different than that of an elementary school. Our families and students deserve to have a safe, appropriate, child-centered environment to learn and grow. I would like to say that I am here speaking for our children and families. I am retiring, so this is not going to affect me, but our families deserve more. I still have relationships with families from 30 years ago. One of my former students, who you may know, Delmas Mayo, is now a junior at Green Academy and an amazing para-athlete. He met his best friend in my class when they were three. They came to spend the day in my class last year and I heard Delmas say to Kiko when they got to the room, "It feels like we are home." This is why we do what we do in early childhood. The mayor has publicly stated that early childhood is a focus for her and administration. I hope that is true.
Thank you for your testimony. So we're going to try with Rob Garrison. Could you please accept the prompt?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Rob. Can you hear me actually?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rob Garrison. I live in the Jamaica Plain neighborhood of Boston and I have children, two children, in the West Zone Early Learning Center. One of my greatest concerns about the proposed plan is the lack of transparency in the planning and the sharing of information, communication between departments, and also between families. It is very unclear when decisions were made on closure and acquisitions of schools. I use the term "acquisition" because a merger suggests combining to create a new school. The West Zone will no longer exist according to this plan, and the students will go into the new school, or actually the school that's there, the Henigan. The West Zone ELC was informed of the proposed closure on May 9, one week following the end of the search for a permanent principal, and a candidate had been already forwarded to Superintendent Skipper. A week later, we found out the West Zone was closing. If communication were at its best, the interim school principal of the West Zone, the families, and the community would have known that this would have affected a huge decision in hiring. Additionally, now the school has a new permanent principal for one year, and not to mention the new hires. Yep, the new hires who were also moving from other BPS schools that were closing or being merged. So I ask that the committee help to hold the district accountable to share the vision of our school: restructuring with specific details based on data and known metrics. The staff is a wonderful staff, and you've heard of two of them here now. And I just am very concerned that the decisions are claimed to be...
Muchas gracias, your time is up.
Thank you.
Please send us the... Good morning. Our next speaker is Agustina Morón.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, you can start.
Can I start? Okay. Thank you very much. Hello, Boston Schools Committee. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you so much for, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak and hold on one second. I have my children, no, I haven't. Hold on one second, please. Hold on, I apologize for this. Okay.
Mommy, come here, baby.
Sorry. Um, so again, I apologize for the, for the interruptions. Our family, I, Agustina Moron, resident of Jamaica Plain, our family was very fortunate that our son was placed in a K zero spot at West Zone Early Education Center two years ago. He's now in K one with Ms. Downing. Ever since he started, we have been impressed with the level of care, commitment and dedication of all teachers and staff at West Zone. What impresses me the most is the holistic approach to the students' education, not only about the academics, but safety, well-being and socio-emotional learning. I believe that the excellence of West Zone delivers lies in its early education focus. My biggest concern about the closure of West Zone is losing the high quality of care to individuals, student needs and losing access to resources specific for their school age. BPS needs to create more of this type of early education programs and not closing them. We need to ensure that all families in Boston have access to public early education so that we can go to work and make sure that our kids thrive in such programs. I ask that the committee votes no to the plans of closing West Zone and think about the negative impact on current and future families that benefit from such programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So we are going to
Thank you very much.
Laverne, Laverne Martinez, and then we're going to try Aunt Chinchilla the George again.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Laverne Martinez. I would first like to ask the committee, the committee to please vote no to close in and or merge in the West Zone ELC. My family's experience and that of many at the ELC what has been amazing. Due to its small classrooms, it has been able to provide the same educational level as many private schools. I also have a twenty-year-old son who actually went through the BPS school system, now attends Bentley, so I can attest as to other, you know, his K one level versus what my daughter is currently receiving at the ELC. What makes it even more amazing is their free extended hours catering to working moms like myself. I ask again to please vote no on the closing of the West Zone ELC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Aunt Chinchilla the George? No, she's not. And so that concludes our public testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. We'll now move on to action items. Our first action item this evening is the grants for approval totaling thirty thousand dollars. I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Uh, thank you, Chair. These are two grants, one for the New Consortium uh, and the other for Blackmail Advancement Grant, which is with the city to partner with Chief McCarthy and some of the work that, you know, we've been doing cross-sector with the city. So I would just encourage, there are smaller grants, but will be impactful grants and I would just encourage the committee to vote affirmatively.
Thank you. Now opening it up for questions, comments from the committee? No. All right, thank you. There's no further discussion. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grant by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Our section action item this evening is the approval of the Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester Charter Amendments. Now I'd like, again, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Great, thank you, Chair. So just as a reminder, the Horace Mann Charter Schools require updates to their charter documents as part of the standard renewal process. Amendment approval is required by this committee as well as the Charter School Board of Trustees, the Boston Teachers Union and DESI. Up Academy Boston will consolidate into Up Academy Dorchester at the end of the current school year and the school operate under the current Up Academy Dorchester Charter starting July first. Until that consolidation takes place, there are required amendments that need to be approved for DESI compliance purposes for both entities before they merge. We ask that tonight you approve these changes so that the consolidation can continue. Up Education Network Chief Operating Officer Mike Power is here. Were there to be any outstanding questions?
There any questions? Okay. Thank you. All of this, no further discussion. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester Charter Amendments as presented. Is there a motion?
So.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Conrad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Our final action item is the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. You'll recall that Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Community and Family Advancement, Dr. Anna Tavarez presented the recommendation to the committee at our May eighth meeting. I will now invite the superintendent to offer any final comments.
Uh, great, thank you, Chair. So tonight we're asking this body to vote on the district's participation in the Massachusetts Inter-District School Choice Program. As you know, each year the Mass and School Committee must choose whether or not to participate in the program during the upcoming school year. The Educational Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three amended the Massachusetts School Choice Law and established a presumption that each school committee will admit non-residents under the school choice program unless districts vote not to participate by June first of each year. Rationale for withdrawal must be shared then with DESI. If the school community members do not vote to withdraw from the school choice program, means the district agrees to allow non-resident students to attend BPS schools starting in the school year twenty-four, twenty-five. If the members decide the district should participate, they must also decide whether to restrict enrollment at certain grade levels or it is assumed that all grades will be open for enrollment in the fall. Since the law was enacted in nineteen ninety-four, the school committee has voted not to participate in the school choice program in order to ensure that Boston resident students have priority access to all BPS schools. Chair Robinson will review the vote language. This will, this always causes a little confusion. The key word in the vote language is withdraw. So yes means you agree the district should withdraw. No means the district should not withdraw and that thus automatically enrolling us. At the last school committee meeting, Dr. Tavarez and I shared several of the main reasons why participation in the school choice program would not work for our district right now or benefit our students. So I'm asking for a vote yes to withdraw BPS from the program. As I indicated last session to member Conrad Hernandez, we will continue to explore for a future time what limited participation could look like.
So opening for questions, comments?
I have a question. Do we, there are districts where, we listed a bunch of districts that are not participating, but there are districts that do participate. How many students from BPS leave the district because of school choice to those places?
I honestly don't have that information. I mean, we can get it for you, but I, I don't have it off.
Cause I just, um, yeah, I guess I'm just wondering the level of participation that currently.
Only in Medco for the most
Yeah, I mean, we can't, like, it's not
Not reciprocal.
Yeah, it's not reciprocal, so it's not going to, it, the only place we would see is Medco, but also virtual. Um, we do see it with some of the virtual schools.
But like Fall River, there's other places that have opted in.
But we're not
And Chair. We, not that we're receiving.
Right.
Our kids can leave.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, I don't off, like, right now have that data. Happy to, we can pull it and see if we can get it. It will come out of the SIMS data. Uh, so it is data that we could get.
And I guess I will just ask. No movement on any smaller pilots, particularly like where I left last week thinking about having some curiosity around was sixth grade and well, second grade, sixth grade and ninth grade, just given the way that seats expand in those grades. So what, we continue to have under enrollment in those places? I'm, yeah, I'm just, I think you know where I'm at. I'm, it's been two years of me asking for us to do something on this issue and for two years I've been told we'll talk about it next year. And that is not you, that's a, that's a collective body piece, but I'm starting to lose trust that we will talk about the issue unless we vote no and do something about the issue.
Yeah, I think, um, I think that to remember that it's not just the grade level the student comes in. It's the, we then have that student for the rest of the grades they're here. And, um, you know, I think when we're already trying our best to recognize we have a shortage of high-quality seats for students and we're trying to add as quickly as we can those high-quality seat opportunities to then have students from outside of the district who then would compete with students who have been in BPS for their careers, uh, and then potentially lose those seats. Uh, that would be hard to explain for me, at least to the community.
Yes, and also at the same time, families who leave the city because they can't afford to be here anymore, but also then have to leave our system, like in the conversation so far, we haven't talked about declining enrollment and the reasons for declining enrollment, including the number of folks who just leave for more affordable housing outside of the city and maybe even still work in the city. So I'll just say the same thing I said the last two years, which is I hope next year we don't talk about this two weeks before the vote and that we can do, try something creative, even just to scratch an itch that I have. The idea of voting to withdraw from school choice doesn't sit well in my spirit.
Any other comments? Mr. O'Neill?
So Madam Chair, thank you. I apologize to my fellow members that I couldn't be at the last meeting when this was presented. I was out of state and so um, I did catch up obviously on the conversation. I remember the conversation last year and um, I did reach out to some statewide experts on school choice beyond the district to ask them to both, you know, question what the district was saying to us, but also asked, you know, so can we do a pilot program? That, that comment that member Cadet Hernandez makes about people that have been priced out of our district and have to move out, I think particularly in East Boston, right, has been an issue of community members. So I did ask some statewide experts on the matter and the feedback I got was that this is predominantly the, the districts that opt in are predominantly rural districts, more in the central and western part of the states because they're trying to fill, you know, a first grade or a second grade, just got a couple more students to be able to have a teacher. Um, their sense was most in the eastern part of the state and particularly the larger cities do not do it. They did say we could do a small number, but they really cautioned us to think about the implications of that because they said for two reasons. Um, one is obviously the budget implications that, you know, we would be reimbursed five thousand per student and we're clearly spending a lot more than that and we're already nervous. This body expressed a lot of concerns about the budget for next year, let alone for this year. Plus, we would have to pay additional transportation costs, et cetera. So they cautioned about the budget implications. And the other thing, quite frankly, they kept saying over and over again is just remember, once you let a student opt into your district, you have that student through twelfth grade. So if we say, well, we have some under-enrolled elementary school, let's try it there. These students are now in our district and they're in our district to twelfth grade and so are their siblings. So now all of a sudden we have, yes, we have some under-enrolled high schools and we're trying to deal with that, but we also have large in-demand schools, not only our exam schools, but you think of Boston Arts Academy, you know, where students have to apply for them. You think of Quincy, you think of a bunch of the smaller schools that have wait lists and are trying to grow. And, and I would really personally struggle with explaining to a family why your child didn't get in because now someone from Brookline or Newton is getting in and they're paying five thousand. And so, um, I, I understand exactly the thoughts about is there something we can do creative on this, particularly for the rationale raised? But I personally, and I'm just expressing my opinion now because I wasn't able to last week. Um, I just, I struggle with the concept of doing it because there were so many side repercussions, repercussions? Thanks. So I love the idea in theory, but then in practice I really struggled and I, and I checked with these state experts to say, is there a way we could do this? So I just wanted to express my opinion. So for that reason, I'll be voting yes to withdraw from it. So.
Any other thoughts before we move on?
Can I say one more thing? I'm, I'm curious who the experts are, but I am also we're the same body who doesn't vote to expand seats at the screen schools. Where, I mean, this is literally in all of our control, like sometimes I'm here and I feel like I'm going crazy. Just a few weeks ago, we were saying we wouldn't expand seat. We have schools that are thirty percent enrolled and we won't expand seats to, to exam schools. And yet the, our fear of this, and this is not just you, this is what came up last time too. Our fear in participating in a school choice process is the exam schools. They will want to go to our most selective schools when we literally control how many seats those have. Like we have so much power to do that. Even today, I mean, we're going to vote in a little, or we'll hear the presentation of like our big facilities plan, which is a school closure we heard about in January and a merger that like we could just do so much more. So I don't know. I, and I hear all of it and I, God bless the experts, but I am I will, I will continue to say this, it is a pro desegregation strategy. It does not surprise me that your big cities in Massachusetts have chosen not to participate in a desegregation solution. And I think everything we're saying, if we change around words, is scare tactics that are often used to say not in my backyard. And so I'm not thinking about the family in Newton. I'm also thinking about the family in Chelsea. I'm thinking about the family in Chinatown who doesn't, can't live in Chinatown anymore, but wants access to a great school and works in the community. I think we can do the whole scare tactic thing of like the Brookline family or the wealthy Newton family, but like we all know that's not the family who's choosing to come here. Those schools are working too. You're not leaving Newton Public School to come into BPS. I mean, it may happen, but like that's, the floodgates are not opening. What you will get are families who are working in the city trying to figure it out or who are priced out. And what we might also get, even if it's five thousand dollars, we are spending a lot of money keeping empty classrooms open and empty buildings open. And we are not, we have chosen to not be aggressive on that. And then at the same time, we are choosing not to be aggressive on filling those seats with people who may be interested in going to them. And then at the same time, having to move things around to continue to create high-quality seats, I think we can do it all. But it, and I will end here and I really will because I know it's not going anywhere. It again, doesn't surprise me two years of this conversation later and we're in the same place, having the same conversation two weeks before, being like, we'll look at it next year and we didn't look at it at all this year. And I, I, on a personal level, I feel like it's an affront. And on a system level, I think it's, it's sad.
Mr. Conrad Hernandez, I hear you. I will respectfully say, if you notice, my very first comment was about the East Boston community and I have visited every single school in East Boston. Every single school this year, I have talked with every single school leader in East Boston. I am acutely aware and I brought it up myself about parents who have been priced out of that community, the impact to their students. So I'm not raising scare tactics. I'm speaking truthfully about what some of the implications could be, would be. And I can name a bunch of communities that we would have people interested in coming to our schools. But I just want for the record, the first community I talked about was East Boston and the student, the families that are being priced out and are moving to Chelsea and Everett and Revere, et cetera, and the students have to leave our system because of it. So I just want to make that for the record.
And I, and I heard that. Thank you. And I, and I heard that. Thank you.
This issue is for better or worse, very, very important to me because it is in my line of work for the last 40 years. And, um, as a matter of fact, that's pretty much my life's work. I'm, I'm a civil rights lawyer. I cannot and I, I will not be able to look at it beyond the, uh, lens of civil rights. While I, I, I hear you, I, I understand the ramifications regarding uh, budget regarding everything else. But you know, I, I, I understand, I do understand the constraints that, that will be imposed on, on the school district if we open this. But at the same time, member Brendan Canid Hernandez, surprisingly, I'm with you. Uh, I'm with you on this, um, on, on the rationale that we are a school committee. We advocate for desegregation. We advocate for, you know, for fairness, equity. It would be very hard for me to balance between the real reality of, 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 uh, transportation, finance, budget and all that with the under enrollment, the, uh, yeah, the, the, the other issues that we are hearing every day regarding racism and, and all that. And here we are. So, uh, it, it's very hard for me to vote yes, but at the same time, I know that if I vote no, it would be, it would be, um, valutaries to our, to, you know, to, to, to our children. So I, I'll let me state for the record, very sorry, but I will abstain from the voting. Thank you.
Try to be very slow, Alina. I'm voting yes, not because I don't agree that every family in Massachusetts deserves a school choice. Just like myself, I came all the way from Kverd and came to Boston and graduated at Burke. However, even the newcomers and folks are coming from another country and they're like, oh my God, I'm going to Boston. Best schools, better than what I have at home. Sometimes that in itself is very misleading. Cause tw- two Wednesdays a month, we're coming here, we're talking about the need of investing in disability services, multilingual, all the different services that each of us come and advocate for. So to me, until BPS solves what we have here, I don't want to keep misleading folks, even if it's from Brockton, Newton, Kverd to come and think that this is actually better than what you have at home. So it's more of a, like a priority. Am I prioritizing to opening it up so everybody has access to it? Or am I prioritizing the issues that we currently have? So they're not coming here and still dealing with the same issues that our Boston families and residents are. So it's hard. I, I totally hear you. Like I, I, I'm all about opening the doors, giving folk, everybody the access, but I don't want to lie to them and say, if you come here, it's going to be better than what you're getting at Chelsea. So I, that's where my, my yes is coming from, but I agree that we can't keep having this conversation. And this is the first time that I'm having a conversation with the committee, but I hear you on we can't have this conversation two weeks or a month before. Um, I would, you know, I would propose the district to have some sort of group tasks or whatever that's working on figuring out solutions. If it's a pilot or whatever that is. So it might not feel that every year we have this conversation. It feels like our hands are tied. Uh, and I don't think it was done purposely, but I think it would be good to hear the feedback that's being offered about how we're actually being engaged in a matter. Uh, but I, I trust that BPS is doing a lot to fix things, but I don't think we're there yet. We're, we're asking for a master plan. So I don't really think I need to open it up for the rest of the state if I don't really know what, what buildings are going to actually be here in two, five, 10 years. I'm, I'm just saying. So, um, let's solve the opportunities and challenges that we have here before thinking about opening up for the state. And even if you open it up and it's, oh, we're going to have more money. Who's to say that the additional money that BPS gets is actually going to be allocated where we want it to be allocated. And maybe it is, but again, there's still an issue. We have all this money and every year there's still a conversation that BPS is now locating money where it needs to go. Right? So I don't care if we get more money or less money, whatever we have, we need to do a better job of allocating them in places that it needs to go. Um, so in my case there, thank you.
Anyone else before we vote?
I'll hold everything that, uh, colleagues have said. The, the notion, and if I'm understanding this correctly, I think we also have a buffer to this too, because in my head, I think what the quote unquote prized possessions of, of BPS exists in our exam schools. And we have a policy in place that is literally designed to ensure that what we're talking about doesn't happen. So I think I, I hold that at the same point, um, when we're, when.
The, the, any students that come in through school choice would have to go, would, would then be entitled to compete for any of the exam school seats. So.
But would they also receive points?
Well, I think, I think that's some of the intricacies, right for us with school choice.
But, uh, yeah, and as a committee, we would, we would be the, the body that would address that. Right? So, um, um, so there's, there's that piece. I think the, the economic piece for this is probably like the main deciding factor for me. Yeah, uh, but also like what I'm, like what I'm hearing out of all of this is, is that this issue, which is not unlike other issues that we've encountered as a school committee, and I can only speak for myself. Um, where it has felt, where it has felt time and time again that we've kicked the can down the road and that we continue to do that as a school committee. And so I hear member Cardet Hernandez's frustration where, where do we decide when it stops? And, um, yeah, then that's this attention that I'm holding and that's what makes it particularly, uh, tough. Um, but yeah, like for me, I think the, the deciding factor is, is really that, that, that economic factor and figuring out all the issues, particularly around, thinking about transportation and, and like all the costs that are associated with it. And just, you know, what, um, uh, Ms. Lima Barbosa pointed to as well, just clean your own house before we start thinking about bringing folks in. Um, and so, uh, yeah, thank you.
Before we vote. Would I just make one appeal? Um, even though I, I'll stand my ground on abstention. I do recognize that the, um, the recommendation of, uh, attempting to communicate or to enter into some sort of a dialogue with other, uh, I, 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 I respect the fact that you had already reached out to experts. But I was hoping that, uh, that this administration, this, this school, uh, administration will endeavor, I don't know, uh, somewhat, um, uh, somewhat realistically in looking at other options, including the pilot, um, uh, uh, options that, uh, member Hernandez, um, uh, recommendation, it just, it, I, I'd just like to see what are the outcomes from those kinds of, uh, communication, from those kinds of, uh, negotiations. It may not go anywhere, but at least, you know, we're, it'll prove to me that we are trying our best to lend some support, some support to the community who are very much concerned about transparency, who are very much concerned about, I, we've, we've, we've been hearing every time, every, every public hearing, racial equity and all that. I, I, I like to see some, you know, some, some um, attempt, uh, satisfying that concern to the extent that you could. Thank you.
And I, I mean, I'm actually curious, particularly from your perspective, because it is also, it can also compromise our commitment to racial equity because you'd be thinking about removing financial resources from some of our most disadvantaged groups. So I'm just, so I, I, like, again, I'm holding that to, right? So, um, so like the, I'm, I'm wondering how you see that. Um, and just, just to give me a little bit more perspective on it as well. Yeah, I'm just really curious.
Uh, I, I hear you and I respect your position. I, I don't particularly just look at the financial aspect of it, although I recognize that it is very important. What? We are minorities. We've, 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 we've known, we've known our, our lives. Uh, beyond financial aspect of, of discrimination, there are other aspects as well. And and I, I do understand, but you know, the, the, the financial, the financial aspect play a major part. But I'm looking at other, other opportunity, other equality for everybody. That's why the fact that, I'm not saying that it's not, it's, it's not crucial. But I strongly believe that we can work around it. We can find ways, we can find innovative, uh, options. Um, if we put our heart together and balancing out all other factors that contribute, that contribute to racism. Uh, because financial aspect is, it's not the only aspect that is, that is to be considered in, in discrimination. So that, that's how I see it, but I'm not saying that it, it's, it's not the wrong way or the right way. I, I respect everybody's position.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, I appreciate all you comment, everyone. Pero voy a decir en español esta vez.
I'm gonna say it in Spanish this time.
Y voy a ser bien breve.
And that will be very brief as well.
Mientras estoy escuchando los comentarios de mis compañeros, me llega la mente.
In the process where I'm hearing all the comments that all my, uh, partners here are making, it comes to my mind.
Cuál es la población estudiantil que tenemos en esos distritos?
What is the student population that we have in our district studies, my question?
Económicamente, verdad? Lo hemos hablado. Creo que en el punto económico estamos de acuerdo.
So financially, at least in that particular point, we are in agreement in the financial aspect.
Pero me preocupa que saben ustedes cuántas personas tenemos nosotros en lista de espera?
However, it is very concerning. Do you know how many people, how many persons do we have on wait?
Para estos estudiantes que emigran, que están esperando poder estar en una escuela donde hablen su idioma.
Particularly for those students that are immigrants, that are hoping to have access to a school where they speak their own language.
Entonces, el nosotros brinos a la oportunidad de, de que pueda estar el choice, Boston choice.
So we open up those opportunities for students to come here to the district as the choice program states.
Nuestros estudiantes que están aquí, que tienen tiempo esperando poder estar en una escuela bilingüe.
We have to consider that there are many students here waiting, waiting for the hope to be able to access a school that is bilingual.
Van a estar en el mismo nivel de competencia.
They will be basically at the same competition level.
Y nuestros estudiantes, muchos inmigrantes con una, eh, una nivel económico bien bajito.
So you have to consider that our populations, the immigrant population, the financial, uh, levels or status is typically very low.
Que no es la misma condición económica que tienen estos distritos, los estudiantes de este distrito.
Which is not the same, uh, uh, financial condition that those districts have. They have a different financial situation.
Podrían ellos tener una desventaja.
So if that is the case, they could be at a disadvantage.
Por eso mi voto voy a ser que sí.
So for that particular reason, my vote is yes.
All right, I'm gonna, I just want to make my one comment to the end.
Can I ask one question quick?
You may ask one question.
Thank you so much. I just, if whatever happens with this in the future, if we continue to explore it, I do think, and I think there are scare tactics in the presentation here. I also don't think we're getting an accurate picture about the budget. It is $5,000 from the sending district, but we would still get state aid for the student who is enrolled in our district. And we would still get our, the federal funds. And I just.
Uh, could I ask, um, CFO Bloom to just come and weigh in on that? Cause I want to make sure that we actually have accurate information on this one.
Hi, good evening Superintendent and Committee. So, um, with the way our chapter 78 is set up with minimum state aid, we essentially would get very limited of any additional state revenue. If the student was low income, there's a chance we would get a little bit more Title I, but the, the, the benefit of, um, the financial benefit we would get would be way outweighed by both the cost and the risk of future transportation costs once we own the student.
And the transportation cost being if they had a disability?
Yes, or if they, you know, move districts in a circumstance that means we're still obligated to pay for their transportation and there's lots of, I, it's unclear to me what the, what the fi- the limited financial gain we might get, um, from this. Would feel like it'd be outweighed by the risk of continued obligations to meet the needs of students.
I, maybe we bring the ex, some other additional experts into the conversation. I thought the idea of a task force would be helpful, but. Oh, sorry. I was saying maybe in the future as, as we don't have this conversation two weeks before, we have a task force, we bring in some of the experts. Um, I think there is deeper conversations around the equity implications, the financial implications. So, yeah.
Okay. I want to call for the vote, but I just have one quick comment to make. We're sitting here with this discussion, which I think is very important. But what's looming ahead of us is the major discussion about the own future of our own district and where we hear week in and week out from parents saying their needs are not being met. We have children, we have numbers of children on IEPs, multilingual learners, any number of things that we're not already meeting the needs of students that are in our district. As much as I would like to entertain the idea of having additional students come, as Ms. Lima Barbosa says, when we've got our own house in order and we feel that we are adequately meeting the needs of all 50,000 students that we have now, which is the business, biggest district in this state. Then I feel like, yes, we can welcome and open arms other students. But personally, until we're there, I really feel like I want a better obligation to the students that we're already trying to educate. Plus those students who may find their way to us as migrants or other pieces in the near future, because their needs will also be great. Um, and, um, yes, we can, uh, uh, one thing that I would hope we can do is maybe to get the state data next year before we have this conversation so that we could take a look across the state as to who does or who does not. And are there other districts of our size or near our size that are looking into this issue? Or as what we've heard, are they only really some of the smaller ones that are looking to have two or three students? So, um, thank you all for your concern, but I think we've really got to turn our efforts towards the big issue that's facing us this evening. So with that, I will now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2024 to 2025 as presented. Just to be clear, a yes vote means the district agrees not to participate in the school choice program as recommended by the superintendent. This can be confusing because it is a double negative. So as an example, I will be voting yes, because I do not think we should participate in this program. So as an example, I will be voting yes, because I do not think we should participate in this program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Oops.
No, yeah, just one question. The, 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 the vote yes means only one year. This, this.
We only vote for one year at a time. It's only for one year at a time. So yes. So it's for this next, so it's only for, we're voting for school year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. Okay, so is there a motion?
So moved.
So thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the room?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Candace Hernandez?
No.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Abstained.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Um, the motion is passed by five and one name and one abstain.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to reports. As you may recall, we're trying to prioritize efficient time management. Didn't do that so well two minutes ago. With only one report on the agenda this evening. It remained paramount to optimize our time for a timely conclusion. So Ms. Pravex will assist us in keeping us within the established time. Additionally, I encourage members to seek clarification from staff or any unanswered questions as there will be no voting tonight, providing an opportunity to gather further, further information between meetings. Our only report this evening is the long-term facilities plan. Let's make sure this presentation and discussion don't go over one hour and thirty minutes. So we are starting at, what, eight twenty? So.
Eight twenty-five.
That brings us to ten. You have children, you want to get home, help your children. Go to bed and you wanna get up in the morning. So ten o'clock, this is, this is our first conversation. It will not be our last. So before I turn it over to Chief of Capital Planning, Deliverance Stanislaus and Senior Advisor for Youth Schools and Schools Rebecca Granger, I wanna invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, we're here to present the second part of our long-term facilities plan to the school committee. In addition to Dell and Rebecca, we'll be presenting tonight, I'm going to ask the whole team to join them because this is not just about our buildings, but it's really about our vision for all students. And every member of my team from academics to family advancement and operations has a role to play in this work. And we're calling this presentation, realizing our vision, proposals for school year twenty five, twenty six. During our presentation two weeks ago on May eighth, we brought you up to date on our groundwork over the past two years. We gave you the historical context for this work. We reviewed the work we've done with the community since publishing the long-term facilities plan six months ago. We shared an overview of each of the eleven major capital projects that are now currently underway and where we're making significant progress. As we noted, this number is more projects than BPS completed in the last forty years combined. I wanna say that again. This number that we currently have underway is more projects than BPS completed in the last forty years combined. These projects represent an immense amount of work from the capital planning team and our collaborators across the district, including facilities, schools, and community engagement teams. It also represents the continued commitment from Mayor Wu and the City of Boston to invest in our school facilities. We're especially grateful to the team at the city's public facilities department. It is critical that we do the work we have committed to already with the community and to a standard of excellence the community deserves. Tonight, you will again hear from Chief of Capital Planning, Deliverance Stanislaus, and Mayor Wu's Senior Advisor for Youth and Schools, Rebecca Granger, who will build on the May eighth presentation. We have several new proposals for you tonight that include consolidations, reconfigurations, and two closures. We will also share a number of academic proposals and other milestones we expect to reach over the next twelve to eighteen months that are designed to increase the number of high-quality seats, high-quality seats available to our students. We describe each of these strategies in much more detail in the comprehensive memo shared with you last week and posted on the Boston School Committee website for the public to read. Our capital improvement work will allow us to build on key initiatives in the following ways. Creating spaces that support the implementation of inclusive ed, allowing us to expand bilingual education, SLIF, and newcomer programming, including dual-language programs, new bilingual programs, and formalized newcomer programs at several high schools. Strengthen the secondary school ecosystem, including early college pathways and more AP course offerings, and adding six new community hub school sites. Tonight, I'm also joined by my three deputies, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Dr. DePina, Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Community, and Family Advancement, Dr. Devaris, and Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Chen. This is district-wide work, so our division chiefs are also here to support with follow-up questions. We cannot remedy decades of disinvestment quickly. This effort must be ongoing, intentional, strategic, and each year continue to build on the goal of increasing high-quality seats for students throughout the district. Over time, we will be able to shift our physical footprint so that we have fewer, and on average, larger schools that can offer the full range of academic enrichment opportunities for all students. As we shared during last meeting, we're not proposing a large number of closures or consolidations this year. We need to plan this work carefully with our school leaders and school communities. At the same time, we need to be building up capacity so that when students are impacted by closures, consolidations, or other changes, families can be confident that they will transition into high-quality learning environments that meet their needs. I'd like to stress that we are allowing the entire twenty-four, twenty-five school year for that planning. So our twenty-four, twenty-five school year is going to be for planning and transition work to happen with the communities. These changes would take effect in school year twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm confident that the proposals we're making this year will improve the quality of education our students receive and better position the district to be stable and sustainable for future generations. We'll come back to this body on Monday, June seventeenth, to ask for your vote. Over the last couple of weeks, the team has started engaging directly with impacted school communities, and that work will continue. We began this process at the start of the school year by working with our school leaders throughout the district to identify opportunities to give students more access to high quality with fewer transitions. In the next few weeks, the team will be holding in-person community meetings, holding office hours for staff, and sending out a survey for family, students, and educators to start to design a transition plan for impacted students. If these proposals are approved, we will continue holding regular meetings with school communities to further develop a specific transition plan over the next school year. I know that for students, families, and educators, any potential change to our schools can mean disrupting established communities, carefully built routines. Our approach must be grounded in continuous community engagement for both the impacted school community and our communities that welcome students into their schools. We have committed to an annual cycle to review the data, engage with the communities, and develop new proposals each year with enough lead time for students, families, and educators to meaningfully participate in developing transition plans. We've had meaningful conversations with this body about why this annual cycle is the right approach. I understand why some community members are asking for a specific year-by-year roadmap. But this work is so intertwined with the core academic and structural changes we're making. From inclusive ed to the expansion of bilingual programs, to the expansion of secondary school pathways, we have to move carefully, reviewing the data each year, and making adjustments to make sure we are continuing to put students first. I have said before that this work is about more than just buildings. New buildings alone don't produce a high-quality student experience. But often, building projects do serve as catalysts for deeper change. The work we currently have underway will result in a significant increase in the number of high-quality seats available to our students, but we have a lot more work ahead. While tonight's presentation is about the technical aspects of shifting the district's physical footprint, these changes will support the academic changes we are implementing. Examples of this are outlined as we get into the presentation and in the appendix of the presentation. We'll come back to the body on Monday, June seventeenth, to ask for your vote on two specific proposals. The closure of the West Side Early Learning Center and the consolidation into the Henigan School and the closure of the Frederick Pilot Middle School, the district's last standalone middle school. And please note that this meeting is being held on a Monday instead of the normal Wednesday. At this point, it's my great pleasure to turn this over to Chief Stanislaus and Senior Advisor Granger to walk you through tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. My name is Deliverance Stanislaus. I am the Chief of Capital Planning for Boston Public Schools. I am joined here tonight by Rebecca Granger, Senior Advisor to the Mayor of Youth and Schools, um, who will be presenting along with me tonight. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge my colleagues, all of the deputy superintendents, chiefs, and other BPS central office employees who are here tonight. As the superintendent shared, this is truly collective teamwork. This team is talented and fully committed to leading the efforts in service of current BPS students and as we build the foundation for the generations to come. Thank you to Chair Robinson and members of the school committee for the opportunity to continue our discussion on the long-term facilities work. We will refer back to when we were last with you on May eighth as tonight is a continuation of that conversation. It's worth empathizing, emphasizing again that our collective vision of a high-quality student experience is the core of what is driving the long-term facilities work. We say collective because the vision is rooted in the voices and experiences of students and families, educators in our schools and central office, and our wider community and partners. To achieve this goal, we have to increase the number of high-quality seats in every school, in every neighborhood, and for every student in Boston Public Schools. The capital and infrastructure investments we are making as part of the long-term facilities plan move us towards increasing the number of high-quality seats. But as we all know, new buildings alone do not result, result in every student having access to a rigorous and fulfilling education. Which is why this work is deeply intertwined with our core academic strategies as well as wider structural changes. As we have shared previously, this work takes collaboration and careful planning. It also takes time. On May eighth, we provided historical context on our capital planning work to date as well as the unprecedented number of capital projects, both in planning and underway. As we mentioned at the last school committee meeting, we are proposing a limited number of school closures. We engaged with the impacted school communities last week, and tonight we'll be sharing those proposal, those new proposals. We will also share our continued work on grade reconfigurations in alignment with the twenty nineteen school committee policy to create fewer transitions and clearer pathways for students. Our goal is to ensure a well-rounded BPS ecosystem. In order for us to get there, we must increase the number of high-quality seats that support the high-quality student experience for every student in the district. The three pillars outlined on this slide, structural changes, investment in facilities, and creating and improving academic and enrichment programs are key drivers to achieving our shared vision of high-quality seats for every student in every school. Later in tonight's presentation, we will walk, we will talk about specific milestones we expect to reach over the next eighteen months to create and improve academic and enrichment programs as well as structural changes, including creating two new programs in service of building a strong, well-rounded ecosystem. This is all in service of increasing access to high-quality seats in school buildings across the district. There has been a lot of focus and attention on under enrollment and the need to right-size the district. It is true that our total enrollment is lower than it was a decade ago. But the full picture is more nuanced. In many schools and neighborhoods, it's not that we have too many seats, it's that we don't have enough high-quality seats, particularly for students with particular learning needs. Closures will be a part of our long-term work, but we need to continue to invest in our schools both in terms of high-quality instruction and in terms of facilities so that all students have access to great schools. When we say we need to build capacity, we mean that now and in the future, whenever students are impacted by a closure or consolidation, they will be transitioned into a high-quality learning environment across the district. In the next few slides, we will discuss how the three core pillars you see here help us lay the foundation to actualizing our vision.
Good evening. Um, so I wanna point out again, uh, the collective team that's here tonight. Um, they bridge across departments, supporting all aspects of district work. This is so important to highlight because for system-level work to take hold and make generational change, it will take the entire system aligned and moving in the same direction. I'm thankful every day to work closely with the BPS team, and I wanna highlight them because I'm about to share their hard work tonight. We are focusing on high-impact investments to transform the learning experience for all BPS students as we increase the number of high-quality seats. These are additional tools and strategies to lay the foundation for greater change. A strong foundation will lay the groundwork to continue to move with urgency, will also ensure that changes are impactful and lasting. I will touch briefly on some of the work underway to create and improve academic and enrichment programs. But there's much more detail in the school committee memo for tonight's meeting, which is posted online on the school committee website for members of the public to read. Inclusive education and equitable literacy are foundational to BPS's academic work. The academics team will share a more in-depth update on equitable literacy at the June fifth school committee meeting. Equitable literacy ensures strong foundational literacy, high-quality instructional materials, and the integration of culturally responsive texts and is a key component of our inclusive education plan, which was launched in October twenty twenty-three. Inclusive education will continue to be implemented over the next several years with implementation beginning in grades K zero, K one, K two, seventh and ninth in the fall of twenty twenty-four. We are continuing to expand the number of schools identified as community hub schools. We currently have fourteen and will add an additional six next school year. Hub school coordinators will be welcomed in, uh, at the Ruth Batson Academy. I still love saying that name. Uh, the Shaw Taylor, the Philbrick Sumner, and the Henigan, um, demonstrating a key strategy for supporting our schools undergo, undergoing mergers or consolidations. We are expanding bilingual education, SLIF, and newcomer programming. This year, or sorry, this fall, we're formalizing three newcomer programs at the secondary level. We're also implementing the expansion of the Margarita Muniz, a dual-language school, starting with seventh grade. The Muniz will also add a Spanish SLIF program, which will support students and staff transitioning from the Frederick. For the fall of twenty twenty-five, BPS is proposing new bilingual education programs at eight elementary schools in Spanish, Creole from Cabo Verde, and Chinese. We will be engaging directly with school communities over the coming weeks and months to identify the programming that best meets the needs of each individual community and will finalize and submit proposals to DESI in the fall and expect to hear back in time for next year's assignment season. We're also proposing a new bilingual program at the Ruth Batson Academy. We estimate the We estimate the nine new bilingual programs will expand access for 250 students in year one. A significant amount of work is underway to strengthen the secondary school ecosystem by increasing the number of pathway programs, and by increasing student participation in these programs, which research shows is correlated with higher graduation rates and post-secondary outcomes. Over the last few years, there's been great progress in increasing the number of early college, AP course offerings, innovation pathway programs, and career and technical education programs across our secondary schools. New for next year and beyond, we're expanding early college with a new designation at East Boston High School, and a particular focus on increasing early college access for multilingual learners. We're expanding AP course offerings, including continuing to add AP African-American Studies at four additional secondary schools next year. And we're deepening our commitment to career and technical education, including through the redesign and renovation project at Madison Park. There's a lot more detail in the full memo that was shared with you and with the public. The second pillar of aligning our work to our vision is structural changes, which is foundational to increasing access and removing barriers. We are expanding the number of seats at existing schools that offer a high-quality experience. There are multiple strategies we're utilizing to expand high-quality seats across the district. At the Josiah Quincy Upper School, we are expanding seats up to 650 through a new build. As noted earlier, the Margarita Muniz Academy Grade Reconfiguration will increase access to a secondary school dual-language community by 190 seats at grades seven and eight. The relocation of the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers, which currently is spread across two campuses, will allow EMK to double its enrollment to 800 over the next five years. There are also schools that students and families seek out, but whose enrollment and growth is constrained by the physical limitations of their building. This summer, BPS will be starting work to identify potential building options that would allow two of those schools, the Boston International Newcomers Academy, Binka, and Boston Green Academy, BGA, to expand to meet demand. Binka currently serves 582 students in grades nine through twelve, and its building is nearly fully utilized. Relocating and expanding the school would allow it to add a seventh and eighth grade, which is critically important to meet the needs of our changing student body. BGA currently serves about 460 students and is essentially at its physical capacity. BGA is Boston's only school focused on sustainability and preparing the next generation of diverse leaders for college and careers in green industries, and runs a reported waitlist of nearly 250 students, demonstrating a high level of interest from students and families. At the May eighth School Committee meeting, we provided an update on the policy passed in 2019 to standardize grade configurations in BPS to either pre-K through six, seven through twelve, or pre-K through eight, nine through twelve. We are committed to minimizing student transitions and creating clear pathways that provide options aligned to the high-quality student experience for students. This slide summarizes the grade reconfigurations currently underway, as well as the progress made on changing grade configurations since the 2019 School Committee policy was passed. Reconfiguring grades is another strategy we are utilizing as it provides an opportunity to use the space we have available differently. For example, transitioning seventh and eighth grade out of a school may allow for the expansion or addition of early-grade seats. We have recently announced three additional grade configuration changes that will take effect in school year twenty-five, twenty-six. Two of the schools where conversations are underway are the Rafael Hernandez Dual Language School and the Gardner Pilot Academy. Both schools will be transitioning from pre-K to eight to pre-K to six. Community meetings are also underway at the James W. Henigan School, and we will go into more detail on the Henigan on a later slide. This slide summarizes current enrollment information for the Hernandez and the Gardner. We held in-person staff meetings and virtual community meetings to provide information about the transition process and timeline, and to address any questions or concerns. As we have shared, there will be a full year of planning where we will continue to engage and support families and staff throughout the transition, particularly those who will be transitioning to a new school community. Students who will transition to another school will receive support with the transfer and registration process. Students directly affected will receive priority in the assignment process for a new school assignment for the 2025, 26 school year. All students who have required programming in alignment with their IEPs or multilingual learning needs will continue to have access in grades seven and eight. At the Hernandez, for example, students graduating in the sixth grade will continue to have a pathway to dual-language secondary education by transitioning to the Muniz, which is adding grades seven and eight. We're also creating new programming specifically designed for our nineteen-through-twenty-two-year-old students who are primarily served right now in our open enrollment high schools. We serve about 850 students in this age range every year. As this population of students prepares to transition to life in the community, they often need support and services tailored to their unique needs. Over the next twelve to eighteen months, BPS is launching two new programs to better serve students with special needs and newcomer multilingual learners ages nineteen to twenty-two, who will benefit from tailored programming. This coming school year, our nineteen-to-twenty-two-year-old multilingual learners, sorry, for our nineteen-to-twenty-two-year-old multilingual learners, BPS is opening a satellite campus for Boston Adult Technical Academy, or BADA East, located in the Orient Heights area of East Boston. There are currently about ninety students, nineteen or older, living in East Boston or Charlestown. These students and others in the area will have the opportunity to transfer to BADA East to access school closer to home. BADA East will provide opportunities to earn a diploma and gain college and post-secondary application assistance. For eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-olds with disabilities, we are designing a post-secondary transition program anticipated to start in September of 2025, with an initial enrollment of approximately sixty students with the potential to grow. The program will help students develop the skills that will enable them to pursue further education and vocational training, develop essential skills to gain and maintain employment, and live as independently as possible. Creating these two programs to better serve nineteen-to-twenty-two-year-olds with specialized programming needs will be foundational to deliver on our commitment that when our secondary students are impacted by a closure or consolidation, they transition into a high-quality learning environment that meets their unique needs and aspirations. We also need to take a close look at our student assignment and special education policies. This graph shows the percentage of grade nine-through-twelve students enrolled across our secondary schools, highlighting the percentage of multilingual learners and students with disabilities. There is a disproportionate distribution of multilingual learners and students with disabilities at our open enrollment secondary schools, which serve forty-two percent of all students, but fifty-five percent of multilingual learners and students with disabilities.
I'm going to actually just stop on this slide for a minute and just ask the School Committee to really kind of look at it. This is the first time we've kind of put the data out in this way, and I think it tells a tale, particularly at the secondary level, of why this is not as simple as just merging schools and closing schools in the secondary world, without us doing deeper work to prepare seats for the students that would be impacted. So when you look at this slide, we have thirty-four high schools roughly, all different shape sizes and types. And what you see is that the multilingual learners and our special education students are really concentrated in our open enrollment schools. It is those open enrollment schools that are actually under-enrolled and underutilized from a building perspective. However, we can't just simply close or merge them without first developing a way for the students who are in them, who are the most fragile, who are our multilingual learners and students with disabilities, to have seats in other places. Some of this has to do with barriers that we have to break down for parents with accessibility. Some of this has to do with building supports up in these types of schools that are on the left side, so that they can better serve and receive students with disabilities and multilingual learners. But we cannot have a system where forty-two percent of the population of high school, nine to twelve, is being served in open enrollment schools, and they represent, six of ten students are multilingual learners in special education. This is not a new problem. Anyone that's been in the high school world has known this problem, seen this problem. But I also want to say that the vast majority of the open enrollment schools are also transformation schools, because we have concentrated and clustered the students with the highest needs in one place. So we would literally be moving students in any kind of merger, closure, or reconsolidation on that open enrollment part to other open enrollment schools. And how do we say to a parent, we're going to disrupt you, disrupt your high school kid's experience, to put you in another school that isn't going to be able to serve you better right now? There's also great disparity in the open enrollment schools with early college and career. And since we know that's a ticket, like we know from the data that's the ticket to enrolling in college and being successful, having those post-outcomes. What we need to be doing next year, the deeper work as we have been this year and last year, in making sure that the student, that the FAD, who flew and had got the chance for aviation at the Berk, that that can happen in other high schools. That's the systems work, guys, that we have to do. So when I say repeatedly, you cannot close your way out of this, we cannot close our way out of this. We have to do both. We have to develop the programming and the strong academics and remove the barriers, and we have to work on our buildings. So this is a really good slide to kind of frame around, because I think it really does set the stage when we talk about the bigger systems problem, and the reason why all these guys are sitting together right here, with Delver and Rebecca, because to undo that that I lived with, because Tech Boston is over there, right, like on the open enrollment. So to undo that, that is all of their work. That's the systems work we have to do.
And I'll just say before I pass it back over to Del that we are not yet in a position to guarantee that all of our students have access to these high-quality seats. And to do so will require addressing the barriers that Superintendent Skipper was just talking about, which is possible, but it will take time.
The third component of our strategy is investing in our facilities. This includes new builds and renovations, as well as closures, consolidations, and mergers. We are also evaluating how to best utilize our current buildings, which I'll return to in just a moment. At our last meeting, I shared the eleven major capital projects underway, more than BPS has seen over the last forty years combined. This represents a significant acceleration of this work with multiple projects finishing each year. The mayor's recommended capital plan for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine includes more than $1.3 billion for BPS projects. This is about twenty-seven percent of the city's overall capital spending over the next five years. This is a significant amount of investments, but we want to be transparent that much of it is quickly absorbed by the eleven major capital projects shown on this slide. But the capital plan continues to invest in BPS in a few important ways. There's a significant new funding for small-scale repairs and infrastructure upgrades across our schools, led by my colleagues on the facilities team. There are placeholders for major new projects that aren't yet underway, but that the district and the city remain committed to beginning as existing projects wrap up and new projects begin. And there are resources for BPS to scope out potential investments in some of our buildings that are currently underutilized, but hold great potential, which we'll share more about in just a moment. Finally, there are resources through the Renew Boston Trust Program to pursue deep decarbonization projects in our school buildings. We're currently exploring the feasibility of decarbonization projects at the JFK and Otis Elementary Schools. Of course, new buildings alone do not provide the high-quality student experience, but these projects can serve as a catalyst to align efforts and resources, expanding the number of buildings equipped to support high-quality seats across the district. School closures are also an important part of our facilities work as we shift the physical footprints of the district. Tonight, we are sharing two school closure proposals. We've informed staff and school communities of these proposals prior to bringing them to School Committee, and have begun engaging school communities to meaningfully shape the transition plan that we're developing. Each of these proposals contribute to our larger district vision of fewer transition and clearer pathways for our students. We deeply recognize that for students, families, and educators, any potential change to our schools can mean disruption, establish communities, and carefully build routines. So our approach must be grounded in continuous engagement over enough lead time to carefully plan for supported transitions for each impacted family and school community.
Del, I just want to interrupt for one minute on this slide. So there is no comparison to what BPS is doing right now compared to the old of BPS. I want to be crystal clear in this. These eleven major capital projects, the investment the mayor and the city's making in our capital, the proposals that have successfully gone through MSBA, represent more than forty, what we did in forty years. So there is no narrative in which we say, this is the same with BPS. That is just not true. These projects unlock high-quality seats at a faster rate than we have ever done. But we need to do them well. And we need to make sure that as projects come off, like the Carter and like Quincy Upper, that we are prepared and ready to put other projects forward. That has always been a stumbling block for us. That is what we're working hard, and the team here is working hard, to do. That does not mean that in the other hundred and eight buildings, that we are not doing some real major work. Like the work that Teresa and Ryan are doing in the facility side of the house is really making sure, like we're taking advantage of roof acceleration repair, and doors and windows, and any kind of heating units, ventilation. Like, those are all happening. Like those are all happening in the other hundred and eight buildings. We are working on that and there is budget. But to, to really transform some schools, you can't put enough money in unless you actually redo the whole school. And so these eleven, eleven major capital projects represent stages of almost complete to the design. This is why when we say every year we're gonna come before you, that has not happened before. When we say every eighteen months, we're talking about the capital cycle regenerating, that has not happened before. So this is work that's, that's being committed to that ties directly into the slides you looked at before, which is we need to focus on high quality seats and experiences for kids. And there are multiple things we have to do to make that happen. The capital projects is a big one, but it is not the only one. Right, Dell?
Our first proposal for school committee's consideration and approval is the closure of the Lila G Frederick Pilot Middle School. The last standalone middle school at the end of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. This closure was announced on January tenth. Sorry, I just wanted to correct the end date for the Lila Frederick coming offline. It's school year twenty-five, twenty-six. This closure was announced on January tenth, twenty twenty-four and is in alignment with the twenty nineteen policy to shift a district-wide pre-K through six, seven through twelve, and pre-K through eight, nine through twelve system. The current eighth graders at the Frederick will graduate at the end of this school year. The current seventh graders will graduate at the end of school year twenty-four, twenty-five. To ease the transition, no incoming sixth graders were assigned to the Frederick for the upcoming twenty-four, twenty-five school year. For transition planning, we are focusing on the ninety-eight sixth graders currently at the Frederick who will become seventh graders next year. Each will be supported in transitioning to new school communities for twenty-five, twenty-six and will have priority in these assignment process. Students in special education programs in alignment to the IEPs as well as students in specialized multilingual programming will be supported to find programs and school communities that match their needs. The Frederick currently has a Spanish life program. The entire program, including the staff, will relocate to the Margarita Munees. This move will complement the current programming at the Munees as well as the expansion of grade seven and eight, which will begin implementation with an incoming seventh grade cohort in fall of twenty-four. We are grateful to the Frederick community for being active and thoughtful partners. We are committed to maintaining the name of Lila G Frederick for the building and continuing to use the building as a school to serve our younger people in Grove Hall and throughout the region. The Frederick is one of our newer buildings in the BPS portfolio. It is in good condition and can comfortably fit about six hundred and fifty students. This spring, we had initial conversations with the Frederick governing board about the future of the building and upon an approval vote for broadening community conversations to understand possibilities for that school, what school community or communities could potentially merge and relocate into the Frederick building. Our second proposal for school committee consideration and approval is to close the West Zone Early Learning Center and consolidate it into the Hen, the Henigan School. Reconfigure it to serve grades pre-K through six, effective twenty-five, twenty-six. The West Zone and the Henigan currently operate in the same building and they both serve students in K two and grade one. But there's no guaranteed pathway for West Zone students to transfer into the Henigan. There are also some operational inefficiencies due to the overlap in grades. Consolidating the West Zone into the Henigan provides a pathway for students from K zero through grade six. I want to reassure families that every West Zone student will have a guaranteed placement at the Henigan. The Henigan will also undergo a grade reconfiguration, eliminating the seventh and eighth grades from the Henigan and consolidating a small number of classrooms across the two schools opens up space and opportunities to add additional K one and K zero seats to meet the increase in demand in the Mission Hill neighborhood and surrounding communities, especially for students with disabilities. The number of new early childhood seats will depend on the programmatic decisions determined in collaboration with the school community. Through conversation with the West Zone community, we know that two issues to work through are the difference between the West Zone and Henigan in bell times and the options for extended day. We are committed to working with the West Zone and Henigan community to make sure students and families continue to have access to extended day as we make this transition. As part of this closure and consolidation, we are also committed to a seven thirty AM to two PM bell schedule with extended day opportunities until four thirty PM for students in grade K zero through K two and collaborating with the school community and partners to develop a community hub school. This will allow students in upper grades to also have access to after-school programming. Both of these proposals will continue, come to this body for a vote on June seventeenth. Between now and the seventeenth, we will continue to engage with the communities and later foundations for next steps. We're particularly asking for meaningful community participation in shaping transition plans for students, educators, and families, which will be finalized over the coming school year. Principal Tanya Woodard from the Henigan has expressed to her staff and community her excitement for this opportunity to warmly welcome the West Zone ELC community into the Henigan. As we accelerate new school construction and renovation projects, we have to also focus on on utilizing our current buildings well. Our district portfolio includes a lot of buildings that are small and outdated. But the long-term facilities plan and the decision-making rubric helps us identify the buildings in our portfolio that have a lot of potential with the right spaces to support our collective vision of a high quality student experience. Over the next year, we'll be working with our partners in the public facilities department to scope potential renovation projects, some of, some of these, at some of these sites. The buildings listed here can currently fit in model space, meaning they are able to hold the physical spaces identifies as, identified as supporting the high quality student experience. They're also underutilized as of October twenty twenty-three or will soon be vacated. Some of these buildings will likely require significant investment to bring building systems up to date, which others may only need more cosmetic upgrades. In some of these schools, enrollment is already projected to grow due to grade expansions or welcoming additional students. The district is meeting such opportunities with academics and facilities investment to further expand the high quality student at these schools, which then increases enrollment and therefore the utilization rate of the schools listed here. On the next few slides, we'd like to spend a few minutes talking about what is ahead for implementation of the district's long-term facilities plan. At the May eighth school committee meeting, we shared three metrics as part of the data framework. These metrics served as an initial guide for decision, decisions about investments, including closures, mergers, reconfigurations, and other school changes. As a reminder, the three metrics on this slide serve as three distinct indicators that some type of intervention should be considered. Indicators that something about the building is a barrier to providing the high quality student experience. These measures are if the building experience score is a two or less on the scale of zero to four. Whether the building can support a hike, a support, a full continuum of services and the five-year utilization rate of the building. The majority of our current school buildings met at least one of these criteria at the moment. We're also taking into account other metrics, many of which surfaced through conversations with this committee, school leaders, and other school community stakeholders since January. The additional metrics shared here aligned with the academic priorities and structural changes we shared tonight. These metrics and all of the underlying data are available to the public in the memo posted to the school committee website. This data framework builds on decision-making rubric to develop for new builds and major renovations and will help inform decision-making for future proposals for closures, consolidations, mergers, new bills, and major renovations. All of this data is available to the public so that we can collaboratively develop future proposals alongside community members. Some of the things we are taking into considerations are how families are choosing their schools illustrated by the percentage of students who are administratively assigned as well as which schools are often found in student, often found in students and families' top three choices. Another factor we're considering is the percentage of student populations that live near the school, whether within the walk zone or in the same neighborhood. We heard repeatedly that students and families prefer to attend schools closer to home. And finally, because we also heard repeatedly the importance of schools as part of their communities, we'll review neighborhood factors such as the population of school-aged children nearby and programming opportunities aligned to the needs of our families. Tonight, we shared two proposals to close schools, one of which includes a consolidation into a co-located school. We also shared plans for three-grade reconfigurations as we continue to move toward a primarily pre-K through six, seven through twelve system. Each impacted community has been assigned a senior project manager from the capital planning team who will work closely with the school leadership team to manage all aspects of the project and facilitate community engagement and participation. Continued engagement efforts will include a survey regarding transition supports, in-person community meetings, and office hours for staff. We are fully committed to supporting and continuing to engage with impacted communities throughout the transition. We know that transitions are challenging. We also know that this work takes time. So we have developed an annual cycle of evaluation and review, evaluation and review, applying the data framework to determine proposals and engaging with community around priorities and supports. We've committed to a full school year of transition planning so that students, families, and educators can meaningfully shape what the transition looks like for their community. As the superintendent said, this is long-term facility, this is a long-term facilities plan. We've committed to this cycle so that as we're creating new high-quality seats, we're also closing and consolidating where necessary to move students into better quality environments. On June nineteenth, we are asking for the school committee to vote on the two school closure proposals presented tonight. When we think about the future of Boston Public School, the vision is a full ecosystem of schools district-wide able to provide a holistic and high-quality educational experience. So it's partly about the number of seat, so it's partly about the number of seats, but it's also about the type of seats and opportunities that the schools offer. When we consider seats available and demand for seats, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. We've learned quite a bit about how we want our physical spaces to support our students' learning. The type of learning experiences we have defined as a collective community require not only a greater amount of space, but for the space to be used differently and therefore to serve our school communities differently. Thank you for your time tonight, and this includes tonight's, concludes tonight's presentation.
Thank you. Thank you both for your presentation. We've got forty-five minutes that we, if we're gonna end at ten o'clock. There are seven of us. That's it. You can have seven minutes each. No, you want more than that? You want to go beyond ten o'clock? I mean, the issue is, we said we were gonna try to do an hour and a half.
Yes, Chair, just, I just also want to, this is obviously front-loading with a lot of the information. But we have, uh, we don't have the vote until the seventeenth, which means we have another two meetings, right?
We have two more meetings in your time in between times to get all of your questions answered. So before we begin this process, I want to know if we can agree to seven minutes each for this evening, or do you want to change that? I mean, it's up to you, ten o'clock. All right, that means seven minutes each. All right.
I am just stating for the record, I hate this part. Like, just have the conversation, see how it goes. But I, I hear what you're doing and I totally respect it, but.
Right. I mean, I know that people have families and want to go home, so I just want to make sure.
And I, but I would also, I would offer the same energy to the length of the presentation that you do to the seven members of the body respectfully, but I hear you. I will cut it in seven minutes.
Okay. Let's begin. We'll go this way. I'm just gonna go straight down the line. Listen to me Barbosa.
Thank you, uh, Superintendent and the team. I see y'all came prepared. The whole team is here. It's good to know that, um, y'all are working together. Uh, Superintendent, I understand why we're only seeing this proposal. But it's hard to ignore, just from the public testimony of what some families were concerned about ELC. And again, uh, and then seeing the presentation and looking at the slides earlier, I was like, oh, some of the concerns that folks were mentioning, you all are actually committing to make sure, for example, the extended hours for working parents, right, or caregivers. From the slide, it seems like that's something that we're gonna commit to. I think it speaks to sometimes the, the community engagement piece where we made a decision to like, okay, we're only gonna do this and then we only really engage with some communities with one meeting, you send emails, I know that. But it's not enough sometimes for families to digest that information and really understand what is being proposed, what they're gonna lose and what they're gonna retain. So I think as you're planning for every year to come and give us different proposals, really think about, are y'all giving the families and the school leaders and community enough time to even digest the information? So we don't have a school community meeting where there's plenty of folks doing testimonies where you can see they didn't digest the information. So that would be my feedback. And I think when it comes to community engagement, community process, I keep seeing it. It's not just saying, oh, we're doing the community process, but it's being truly intentional that you're giving people time to like actually digest. Uh, especially when you think about our, our immigrant families, our families are supporting their kids to have disability, disability um, learning. With that being said, again, it's, it, it just speaks a little bit to like, y'all had a plan, but clearly some folks maybe just didn't have the time to digest even like, oh, okay, let me ask clarifying questions before coming to BPS and say, y'all are not doing the right thing. You're not thinking about my family's needs, right? Um, let me move on to my questions, because I know I'm already running out of time. Um, nice to see that we are proposing new bilingual education, um, especially the K word in Creole. This is a conversation that goes back to Mayor Mano's time. Uh, the community has been asking for this for a while. I just wanted to see if somebody can clarify why we're thinking about, um, twenty, uh, school year, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, just trying to understand like why that's being proposed then and not in the fall. Um, and the word and beyond scares me because it doesn't mean that it's happening. It could mean that it's not happening in the school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So maybe this is not a, we don't have to have the full conversation today, but just wanted to have an understanding why we're making the decision for that particular school year and not in the fall, given that we've had some advocacy like beyond Mayor Walsh's administration, if anybody can help.
Sure. So I think you're.
Thank you, member Lima Barbosa. I welcome that question. Um, I don't want to scare you off by saying twenty-five, twenty-six, and beyond. Um, it's really about the implement, how we would implement the program. So the reason why we don't implement it for twenty-four, twenty-five is because we do need to have it approved by D E S I. And we're building out curriculum, engaging the community, whether it be a and we're building out curriculum, engaging the community, whether it be a TBE program or dual-language program. But in the implementation of the 25, 26 school year, meaning we'd probably start with a K1 and K2 classroom, and the beyond is the building out of the program. So as the students move up, then we would create more additional classrooms.
And I only ask, only of course to educate myself, but also to the folks that are interested in this conversation so they can understand it's not just kicking it for later, but there's particular steps that you have to do in order to actually implement it. So I appreciate you sort of lining that out.
Absolutely, and actually, we've reached out to the community to have a meeting on the 17th with the community, but just realizing that it's the day of the vote, so we may actually change that to the 18th. So we'll reach out to the community, but thank you.
I understand, and then I appreciate you all really touching upon, you know, we can't make all these changes, because we have all these services that we need to make sure that they remain, especially for the families and students that need it. I know we haven't identified the particular elementary school, but what would the community engagement would look like, not only for the Cape Verde and Creole language, but all the other programs that, the dual programs that you all are proposing?
Starting off with the Cape Verde community, we actually have started the engagement process, going out into the community and meeting with some community members, and then actually going to Orchard Gardens and speaking with the teachers and really learning about the different nuances and the different dialects of the Cape Verde and Creole language, and identifying which dialect or which version of the language that we would be able to implement for our curriculum, to align it with our curriculum. But what the engagement process looks like is really, what we have done is, the way we have identified the schools is really looking at the fill rate, looking at the language capacity of the students, looking at the staffing, the bilingual staffing, if there's bilingual staffing, and being able to create more of a pipeline for educators there too, communicating with school leaders, communicating with the educators, but then also reaching out to families and looking to see what is, what would they like in a program for bilingual education program for their child? And then looking at whether the capacity would be for possibly a TBE program, a transitional bilingual education program, where we start kind of like for students, and then we have a clear exit criteria as students learn and adapt more English, but giving them more native language access and instruction? Or whether having a true dual-language program where students become bilingual, biliterate in a language, and ultimately having the seal of biliteracy?
Okay, final question, and maybe Chair, this could also be more just systemically how this works. So for, let's say it's Orchard Garden, how does that work? Is Orchard Garden making a decision on hosting this, the program? Or they're being told that, you know, after the work, data, yada, yada, y'all are the best home? And does that decision somewhat then comes to the school committee to actually like vote on it? Or is this something that don't require like a vote, right? It doesn't require, okay, but how does the school, like who makes the final decision? The school leaders or central office?
I think it's a shared decision, a shared decision between the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, working with the school community. We really want school communities, meaning families, teachers, school leaders, to really be on board with it, but also just really looking at the capacity for the program and sustainability of the program. Sustainability is really key, so we can't just say, oh, we want to have a program, and we implement a program in a school, but we don't necessarily have the teacher capacity, the language capacity, and the student fill rate for the program. So we have put forth some proposals to DESI, and those proposals were passed based on the sustainability of the program, the capacity for students and teachers to be able to implement the program. So it's really kind of like a shared decision, but really kind of really calculated and intentional to ensure that we have long-term success for the program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then for the next meeting, if Dr. Tavarez and her team could come prepared on providing data of how many Cape Verde newcomers we're seeing entering, and I'm talking specifically about the Jeremiah E. Burke and the Madison School. It doesn't have to be in the chamber, but I just would really like to understand what's going on at the high school level, just because I see that you all are formalizing newcomer programs at particular school. I don't know if Burke actually has one, but we should definitely have that conversation, that would be great. Thank you, Chair.
Actually, I'm not ready, sorry.
Asking first, I mean. No, we're gonna just come back down the line, because everybody's gonna speak, so. Going down to, we're off of them, we'll come to this way.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, team, for presentation. I have a lot of questions. For my seven minutes, I can start with, say, thank you, BPS Superintendent, for estar pensando en acciones como ampliar programas bilingües.
Thank you very much for thinking about different options on how to expand the bilingual programs, I do appreciate that.
Eso me pone a pensar que mucho, mucho del trabajo que están haciendo los padres y las comunidades están siendo escuchados.
That makes me arrive to the conclusion that the work that the communities and the parents are doing, their voices are being heard.
Anoche estuve en una reunión comunitaria en San Stevens, y hablábamos de que por años los aprendices del idioma inglés, esta comunidad ha sido bien olvidada.
We had actually a meeting at the San Stevens program there last night, and we were talking to the parents that this particular community had been forgotten for many years, the English language learners, that is.
Sin embargo, cuando puedo ver que están tomando acciones como crear más programas bilingües, me pone a pensar que estamos ya como, lo tenemos en el lente, los estudiantes-aprendices del idioma inglés.
Aware of the fact that I'm seeing that you guys are taking action, creating more bilingual programs, that makes me arrive to the conclusion that we are taking in consideration this particular segment of the population, the bilingual students.
Yo espero que esto no se quede en planeación, sino que verdaderamente nosotros podamos tener programas sostenidos y sostenibles, perdón.
So I do hope that, this is not just for planning, to put it that way, I do hope that there is sustainability in the process as well, in the future with this.
Donde se vean reflejados que nuestros estudiantes no pierdan su idioma nativo.
So this sustainability over time must reflect that the students, the native speakers, do not lose their native language, that is an important component.
Que estos nuevos planes bilingües tengan caminado en que nuestros estudiantes desarrollen, desarrollen sus habilidades en inglés, pero también en su lenguaje nativo.
So this bilingual progress must incorporate that they do develop their skills, not only in English, but in their own native language.
Y quiero hacerle una pregunta con relación a, en el slide número ocho.
So a question I'm going to ask you, it is regarding slide number eight.
En el slide número ocho, ustedes establecen, let me see, en el slide número ocho, que reducir las transiciones de los estudiantes y ofrecerles buenas opciones escolares, eso está bien.
So slide number eight states to reduce the transitions and to offer more, call them more educational options, which in fact, that is good.
Yo estoy de acuerdo con esto, de que las transiciones verdaderamente a nuestros estudiantes le causa, le causa muchas veces dificultad para poder enfrentar dichas transiciones.
So I do have to agree that these transitions present these wrong options and the inability to have the proper transitions, this are impacting the students.
Sin embargo, me preocupa porque estoy viendo que las Rafael Hernández van a cortar el grado ocho, si estoy entendiendo bien, y en la Hurley también.
It is my understanding that the Rafael Hernandez at the, and the Hurley School as well, the plan is to cut grade eight, if I am understanding correctly.
Esto es lo que ustedes están diciendo, ¿verdad?
So that is what you are suggesting, correct? Is that the case?
It's the Rafael Hernandez and the Henigan, not the Hurley.
Not the Hurley, okay, quería aclarar eso.
I wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Y qué han hecho ustedes para medir el impacto que esto va a tener entre las familias y los estudiantes?
And what is it that you guys have done to be able to measure the impact that this will take in the families and the students as well?
So at the, at the seventh and eighth grade level at the middle school, what we've been seeing at sort of like after the sixth grade is that, as just like across the district, we've been losing a lot of students.
No me está traduciendo.
Random.
Random. Sorry, necesito poder entender.
The other interpreter is not, there is something that she's not hearing, the interpretation from the other interpreter, who is virtual.
Okay. Thank you. Estábamos hablando del impacto que van a tener estas familias, porque van a ser impactadas. Entonces, como ustedes han medido los resultados que va a tener esto, qué estudios han hecho, qué han hecho con la familia, qué reuniones han hecho, cómo han comunicado esto.
So how is it that you guys are measuring the impact that this will potentially have in the families? What is it that you're doing to be able to quantify, to measure the potential impact on the families, that was the question?
Most recently, and I just want to acknowledge, very difficult not to speak to you in Spanish. Most recently, we held a community meeting that was specific for families to ask these questions. And of course, there were so many community meetings, I think it was last Wednesday, but please don't quote me on the date, because we had many of them. And we gave time and opportunity for families to understand, to your point earlier, Member Polanco Garcia, this is a lot of information, and some of our families, for them, it's new information, and they need to absorb, how is this actually going to impact my family and the transition of my student? And during that community meeting, we had the school leadership, we also had the leadership that supports the school, and many of the folks from my team and the capital planning team were also there to respond to questions directly in the moment, but also to connect with families that required additional support even after the meeting. So one of the ways in which the teams are working in, as a cohesive team is that the parts and pieces that are the logistical parts of the presentation that both Dellen or Rebecca shared with all of you, those are components of this plan. And to your point, how our families then brought into the conversation is they're brought into the conversation at many points, not just one, because this is complex. And the Margarita Muniz Academy, and I'm only going to speak specific to the Hernandez School, because of course, no surprise to all of you, that's the school I know the most. When the Margarita Muniz Academy was even created, there was always a pathway for our students from the Hernandez to the Margarita Muniz Academy. This plan actually supports, formalizes, and makes concrete that pathway in very specific ways that my colleagues just shared with all of you. And then how do we bring families that weren't there in the beginning, when all of those plans were happening, is in these conversations that we're having with community through our collective participation in the process.
And I just want to quickly add on to what my colleague just shared. Just like holistically, like the schools that are going through sort of like this transition, what we've seen at the sixth grade level, and I just use the Hernandez as an example, and I can just build on that just a little to just like understand the full picture, is in the sixth grade at the Hernandez, we see like a lot of students peeling off either to exam schools or other schools. And what we're seeing is very low numbers at the seventh grade level, like for example, next year, like the Hernandez projected seventh grade numbers is like about like less than 10 students to our classroom. And as we're looking, as we're looking at like the Margarita Muniz, that's opened up like a dual-language program, right? Having, like peeling off the seventh and eighth grade, student, obviously, it's like parents' choice, but students having the opportunity to attend the Margarita Muniz or any other program across the district, seven through 12 school, right? It increased the numbers in those classrooms, students get access to more programming, etc., at the high school level. And I think this just like goes back to the conversation about ensuring that we have, like students are getting access to high-quality seats. I think that looking at the Margarita Muniz and the Hernandez, right, as an example, I think it's like really important for us to like, just like, take a step back and just like look at, zoom in and say, okay, how we're looking at ensuring students have access to high-quality seats, while also looking at not segregating like our special needs students, because as part of like sort of like the sixth grade transition, we're seeing like a lot of our special needs students in some of our seventh and eighth grades being segregated at some of our schools, so to avoid some of those things, investing in the high-quality seats in our seven through 12, and making sure that our students have access to those as we're transitioning the seventh and eighth grade seats.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate particularly understanding, going back to our mid-year update, and then coming back to this to understand the annual cycle. And so I'm curious on a couple of things, particularly what community engagement then looks like in terms of how we're defining or how we are actually informing folks of where their power lies in the decision-making process? Because I think what we're hearing from testimony oftentimes is, again, we're told things, or that they are told things, and it doesn't seem like folks are, the transparency is not necessarily what's going on with a process, but do I actually have a voice to say whether or not this happens or doesn't happen? And just being transparent with that changes the way that people can show up in meetings. And it changes the way that people then digest it, because then it's like, oh, you're looking for me to be involved to this extent, and then I can work with you more transparently, rather than thinking, oh, I actually can vote on this, and it actually turns out I can't. So I'm wondering what you all are doing in that sense to make it clear upfront about what the process is. And I'm saying that because also, then if you have those conversations, you can point back to the racial equity planning tool, which has that spectrum of engagement, you know, and you can point to it that way. And then another question I have just for us as the committee is, do we receive, or maybe that's something that would help us, do we receive any of the stakeholder analysis piece that's called out in the racial equity planning tool? So that we're, so that we're understanding of what the perspectives are from the community? So it doesn't sound like we're hearing it from public testimony where it's like, hey, we didn't get this, or this meeting didn't happen, or, and we also understand that different schools are going to require different levels of engagement, right? So we're not expecting a one-size-fits-all here. But perhaps what would be helpful for us is, as you all are looking at what's the feedback you're getting from those meetings, sharing that with us so that we can read that and say, alright, so like public testimony is not such a surprise to us at times. So I guess that's more of a statement rather than a question, but I am quite, but my, okay, I promised one question. Thank you, Member Polanco Garcia, also for highlighting, I do appreciate that there is an attention to multilingual learners that we are focusing on. My question is, is as we're developing the curriculum for these programs to come online, how are we doing with the staffing plan for these classrooms? How are we doing with getting teachers certified? Just, I'm very curious on how that planning is moving along as we're doing this.
You're asking specifically about bilingual programs?
Yes, like, yes, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a, I don't think, I think historically, I think we've spoken about, you know, as I think about like the ELL task force, I think about what the district... um, you know, as as I think about like the the ELL task force, I think about what the district has been doing. And from my understanding of it is that there's actually a lot of alignment, right? Um, but perhaps like what I'm less clear on is the staffing strategy that is adequate to support it. And so just.
I think the reason people, because this is an example where it actually cuts across multiple departments, right? So that's why Francis is looking at Joel who's living. So I I think the the easiest answer to this is, as we've been meeting with the communities, um, we readily say we need your help recruiting native language learner and like native language speakers in these areas. When there's sometimes no curriculum exists, no formal curriculum exists, as I think when we entered the Caballeroanian community, that was like one of the things they had actually put a lot of effort into developing a curriculum. So it's really working with each community and that language to sort of figure out, is it it, you know, what will be our strategy for recruitment of staff within the community? Uh, and or is it more of like a recruitment on Francis's with OHC side? Uh, if it's curriculum, is it something we need to develop with the community? Or is it something that we can work with a publisher to find out if it exists? Those are the kinds of crosswalks that we need to, as we're kind of thinking through each of the language pathways.
And the only thing I would add to that superintendent is that we also have um programs in our OHC department to help with certification. So we could support the the people that we recruit in their certifications as well.
Yeah, like we have a six million dollar um pipeline grant right now, right? They just got through approval for Paris, who now their ability to speak all kinds of language, right? But helping them to become teachers, right? So that's like a perfect example where we're trying to, you know, apply for grants and uh uh work with our post-secondary partners who have these kinds of programs. Um, RCC, we have our bilingual para program, for instance. So it's really, this is crosswork to be able to do it, but it has to, we really have to work with the community to do it.
Well, uh, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I I don't have a question. I just have a a a comment. First of all, I do agree with uh uh, the superintendent that that it's a long time over, forty years, uh, forty years or more and it's and it's now in your hand and you have been showing us and astronomical type of work, putting this together. I I applaud that effort and I I appreciate your your continued uh work on this. Um, the only comment I would make is on that uh web page fifteen. Um, in addition to echoing the transparency and all that, uh, I I I think we we've been hearing that all the time. Uh, well, actually two comments. First, I support my 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 brother here, um, recommendation of a of a stakeholder synopsis, stakeholder analysis synopsis. I I think that's important. I think I think we need that. As a school committee, we need that. We need to see that that stakeholder analysis or a synopsis of this every time we have a meeting so that uh at least at the very least. Um, we, I at least I don't feel very depressed when I keep hearing about. I I do, I I keep hearing about uh lack of transparency in in community involvement. It depresses me. I can't, I can't sleep at night, you know, I keep hearing that every, repeating. So a a synopsis of that would help. The only thing out of that page fifteen is a reminder, please make sure that uh students with disability and um uh multilingual students do do not have only restricted or restriction to open enrollment. Other schools are there and it's 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 so low. Uh, I I'm not putting, you know, burden on you. But um, I'm very sure you are very, you are all highly intelligent. There are ways to increase that. So that students with a disability, that's my area, and stu- and multilingual students would have accessibility to other schools. Thanks.
Thank you. I I just while we're on this uh one slide, I just want to clarify something and be crystal clear. Our focus in the open enrollment schools is not in any way, shape or form to foreshadow anything around consolidations, any of that. The point of this slide is to show that, one, our special education and multilingual learners need more choice in the system, which is your point, Mr. Fran. Um, you know, in other types of schools, uh, and two, that it is not as simple in any category of just closing a school or merging or consolidating, because a seat is not just a seat. It is a child. And so we have to think about when we're making these decisions, who is sitting in the seat? And how we can ensure that they get to a seat that has the quality we're promising. So I just wanted to clarify that and, you know, on this particular slide.
Let's switch it. We have twelve minutes left.
Okay. Are you ready?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know where to start. I guess, one, I really do appreciate the work and the conversation tonight. And this slide fifteen, I think, is I think it's sobering and important for us to to think about as we engage in the the bigger conversation. I'm holding sort of two things. I think everyone knows I'm holding this. We are not making any real announcements tonight around further consolidation of the system af- Oh, mic check. After, I said, you know, I'm holding two things. We're not making major announcements around consolidating the system. After two years of us being told we are, we have to do this, they tough times are ahead and it's, we're just not there, um, which leaves me somewhat hopeful because I still don't think we have a plan. And so I think it allows us to have another year to not do what I'm worried we're gonna do, which is to do piecemeal announcements. And I think we heard from a young man this evening in public comment of the impact of having experienced two closures because our system didn't have a plan of where we were going to. We were not sharing publicly what schools we were closing and we were sending kids to schools that would later close. So I'm worried that we're just about to do the same thing. Um, but I'm hopeful that we can create, use this year that we are buying ourselves to do much more forward thinking. I think that's part of the community engagement that people are asking for, not how do you engage me once you tell me it's happening? I think they want, this is the engagement they're talking about and we've had, I don't know, like eight thousand listening sessions. And we still don't have a plan that highlights what the future of the system is. I'm thinking about actually John Mudd this evening too and where is the overall master plan? Um, and I think that's goes in two places, like what seats are we creating? How many, where, how, in what timeline? And I think it can change and be fluid as high quality seats come on the table. But I think where it's unfair to constituents to say like, we're gonna wait for high quality seats to tell you what the future is of the system. I also don't think it's realistic on a financial level and I know we have to get through mayoral elections and all the other things to do hard things. But I just think, yeah, that is my worry. So but I have a question in my seven minutes. And it's hard to ask this question because we we haven't seen long-term enrollment projections, which I know came up in the conversation with Desi. But as we build new seats in existing places, how do we make sense of like layering on complexity that we know will need to be unraveled? When we do the inevitable, which is merge and consolidate schools? So like I I, and it is a chicken or the egg question, like what comes first? But like if you build new programs and high quality seats and there's no way around it, we've lost eight thousand seats, we will continue to lose enrollment. We have to merge schools. Like, does it not become more difficult to unravel the pieces? Or is it then just about performance and outcomes? Like, I don't know what comes after that, if that makes sense. If every seat is high quality today, you would still have to merge schools.
Yes, yes. I mean, I I think there's no, clearly there, from our utilization data that we've published, there are schools that are underutilized and I think on one of the slides, the team presented kind of what those buildings were. I think when we talk about the needs of students, as we're thinking about consolidating and merging and 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 so forth, and the seventh and eighth grades are kind of just good examples, right? They're two grades, uh, they're not full in in the schools. And but our commitment has to be to work with parents and the students to give them the option to be in a seat that is going to be a high quality seat, different from what they might have been in, or the same as what they might have been in. Um, so we can't just have, like, that takes a process where we prioritize those seatage and we work with the families, letting them know and educating them about what their options are and choices are. Uh, and then in some cases, it's even worked out, you know, one of the things we've seen as a positive trend is that some of the staff from the seventh and eighth grades actually go to the high school in that region or that area. So that for the student, they feel a sense of connectedness and they can make those transitions. So it really, each one of these requires through the transition. And I think this also goes back to Dr. Alkin's point, which is the the community engagement piece for us right now is on the transition here. To really help the families um hear from them what's important for this transition to happen. And then, so for instance, in the West Zone, we've heard loud and clear, the hours are really important. Like making sure that a feeling of no, of being known for the students from like a small sense uh matters. Uh, and making sure that the surround care is available, like those are really critical things to them. So as we're hearing them, now we have to work those details out. That is the transition planning that happens next year for that particular school. Each one of these, whether it's reconfiguration, consolidation, merger, as small as I it might seem, when it involves families and students, there's and staff, there's a lot of details that have to be worked out there. So I think, you know, in the in the case you're saying, yes, we're, we we will continue to to, as we move forward year to year, we will continue to bring proposals. In some years, it may be more heavy on the closure, in other years, it might be less on the closure. But we will continue to do that year to year as a commitment, which is different than how it's been done before, where years go by and nothing's done. That has not been what's happened here in the last two to three years. Like, you know, we've shrunk six hundred and forty seats out of the system through strategic consolidations here, last year, and class consolidations. That's six hundred and forty seats that we've downsized the system. So, but I I do think we are behind in, you know, and this is, I think, why this team is working overtime and just on it all the time. We're behind in lifting the system with essential initiatives like inclusive ed. Where part of the barrier here for students who are in a self-contained or have an IEP that calls for something specific is they're, they're not able to access continuum of services across some of those other schools. So that's one of the things inclusive ed will help to do is to open up and get rid of some of the barriers and open up that choice. That inclusive plan, as you all know, right, because you've seen it, it's three years of staggered grade configurations that was looked at, advised to us and we agree with from the council of great city schools that does this kind of advising and work all over the country. That's not what we can snap our finger and just do. We have to invest every year in it. It's intertwined with transportation, with enrollment, with how IEPs are written, with family and community engagement. But that one thing starts to unlock some of the barriers. The the uh development of bilingual programming and do language programming opens choice for families. So instead of being these couple, they actually have access across their regions to these things. It's these things that the district's been behind doing and we feel the same sense of urgency. We're all on the same page about this. We feel the same sense of urgency. We, but some of these you cannot snap your finger and just do. We have to do them, invest in them. Sometimes it's approvals, sometimes it's working with the community, sometimes it's recruiting teachers, sometimes it's developing curriculum. We we are working as fast and as hard as we can to do those things so that as the capital projects that we've presented are happening, the marrying of the building and improving the buildings and the marrying of the academic quality and student experience are coming together.
Maybe.
I and I hear all of that and I I hope every time I ask a question, it's it is by no means a dis- it 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 doesn't mean I don't believe that the labor is there or a a a commitment to doing right by kids. I I guess like, I'm thinking like that massing poll comes out, it says seventeen percent of BPS parents understand what's happening. I'm here an hour and twenty minutes after the presentation, I probably am not a, gonna be a great communicator of what's going on. Just being honest, like I'm still confused at what is the plan. I I am gonna keep pushing, like, we can call it whatever we want. Like, at one time, it was like we have a decision-making rubric and like, now we have decisions. I never, I don't understand how the decision-making rubric played into making these decisions. What was part of the rubric conversation that didn't get on there? So then we're like, okay, so that's sort of like same old, we're like doing the grade reconfigurations the way we used to. I think what would be really helpful, I'm gonna just keep saying it, and maybe we don't have to call it a plan, maybe we call it a blueprint, right? Like, we can get jazzy with the words, but like, something that we can put in front of us and it could be around seats. And I appreciate this way that we're thinking about the creation of seats, the existing seats and the ones we're creating. These are the seats we need across particular grade bands. This is where we need them geographically. This is our excess capacity right now and in some way, we're gonna have to get there. And this is our goal towards getting there year over year? Because then we start to estimate like what's the amount of proposals we're seeing? Like, we want to attack ten percent of the problem year over year, twenty percent? I don't know how, I know how, because that's what we, where we do it. But like, I don't know how we have like a really honest budget conversation without a plan for the future that is real. We'll just keep approving the budget sort of like as you do in government. But like, if we're really doing it in a time of, that we know the budget's only gonna get tighter and tighter, just based on the economics around us and we don't have a plan for where we're going, I just think that that part is hard. And so, not a great question, but I'm like fully in support and a cheerleader for the work. But like, we have to have a plan that's has goals aligned to it. You know? And I don't know if that is a possible thing.
Member Credit Hernandez, I I don't want people to walk away hearing this feeling like um, nothing has been done because there isn't a long list of closures. Um, uh, in part of this, we talked about the seats that were being created through um the new builds, through the reconfigurations, um, through the consolidations. Um, those are all in in service of the population of students that we are serving now. I feel like multiple members on this committee highlighted um the bilingual education programs that are serving our um multilingual learners. Um, we talked about the advanced level courses that are serving um kids who haven't necessarily had access to those before. And so part of this is, we do have some, we have open seats in the district. Um, where we're feeling the tension though, is they aren't necessarily the open seats that match our population of students.
And that's what I mean about the goal though. So I'm not saying, I think we're saying the same thing and we might just be saying it different. I'm with you and I'm not saying the goal is just mergers and consolidations. But if we're creating new seat capacity, then we have to have goals around what seats we're creating. And the same is true if we're closing, we have to have targets around what we're closing. And so like, I like the like stuff and things, like here's the new news of what's programs coming and I think that feels good. But it's in service of what larger goal and without projections even of enrollment, it's like, what are we projecting the seat need to be for students with formally interrupted education or what are we projecting the seat need to be for students at alternative programs or what are? And that means we're building those programs and closing other ones. But that is, I'm, I really think you, real talk. Like, that is why the external world is confused. That 17% is a real data point for us to be like, what are we not saying that makes sense? And I'm 100% over my seven minutes, so I'm gonna be done.
Um, I know that, I think some of our chiefs should uh, start to go because we have early meetings tomorrow. Um, but Jamie, could you just take one minute? Because this issue of enrollment projections has come up a number of times. We actually provide enrollment projections, we do long-term enrollment projections, we actually work pretty closely with the city on this. Do you mind just addressing this?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Um, so we are in the process of refining and finalizing some internal long-term projections. Not something we've done historically internally. Last time we did it, we used some outside consultants. Um, it is something that BPS plans to produce ourselves, um, but we are in conversation with research team at BPDA, who we've worked with on this for a long time, just making sure our approach is aligned. But a couple of things we're still doing, we're refining our methodology, we're trying to test it against historical trends. Um, but a lot of the remaining work is thinking about how to contextualize this for people um, as we make it public. Because part of the issue is that if we're looking over a longer timeframe, like 10 years, really small tweaks in little variables produce a really wide range. Um, and we would like to be able to produce something that says, this is what we think will happen in 10 years that we can really build concretely around it. I think that's kind of what people are expecting. But I think the best that we can do is provide a range and explain what's coming out in that range. Um, and what are the conclusions broadly that we can draw from that? Um, and so I think that we're, we're just trying to be really thoughtful about what they will mean and what people should draw from them. Um, so that's the, the piece that's going on now. Uh, I do think that a lot of the information that will come out from them is broadly available with, if you look at the trends that I've seen um, so far. So I think looking at the declines, we've seen in elementary enrollment over the last several years. We know that will likely translate to further declines in the secondary level. So, you know, it confirms what we're all saying here and you all are saying here that we, we need to address. Um, what we don't know is by how much it will decline. And that's why we'll produce a, a range to try and think of what we can do with that. Elementary is a little bit more um, hard to say. We'll have to watch closely. Uh, it depends on what happens with our kindergarten cohorts. Um, there is a world in which those stabilize and we won't see that much more decline over the next several years. Or given declining birth rates, we could see a decline further. So I think in that case, it'll be less obvious what we do with those projections. We'll just have to, to watch.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the only other thing I would say is that we also are trying to watch, like we see trends that throw off some of the projections relative to our youngest learners post pandemic. Particularly like our, our three-year-olds and our four-year-olds, particularly with special ed and our multilingual learners. Um, given, you know, the migrant students that have come that we, we are welcoming with open arms. Um, it's been about 3,000, but that population also churns because sometimes they're moving. So that's why it's often hard to also like factor that into the enrollments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll make this very brief. First of all, thanks for the whole team. This takes a village to put this together and many of you were here late tonight and I want to thank um, the interconnectivity, the thought process on this. So thank you all uh, for your work on this. Chief, great, great work and Dr. Granger, of course. I think like a lot of people, I was expecting we were gonna be moving forward with a, with a list of closings and mergers, merges. It's, you know, been talked about so much recently. It's been expected from the state. We talked about in, in um, budget process and everything and like many was surprised, um, till I had a chance to have a couple of heart-to-hearts with the superintendent about this, about her thinking and it dawned on me the quote from the Spanish-American philosopher George Santayana. I have to look it up, right? Because like many people, I thought George Winston Churchill said it, but it was this philosopher who said, those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. And I think what the superintendent is bringing to the table, someone who's been in the district for a long time and has lived through closings and mergers, particularly at the high school level. And we heard from a young man earlier tonight that, you know, one merger that did not go well or one closing that did not go well. And I think the superintendent really stepped back and looked at, when I hear you say you're focused on the students and you can't move a student unless you have a high-quality seat to move them to. And you're focused on adult ed, um, excuse me, alternative ed, which is a subject I've always been intently interested in, as you know. Um, and career exploration and dual enrollment and um, bilingual, bilingual education and special education and having these pieces in place to then have a high-quality seat to move a student to. Number one, and number two, when I read through this, you know, we get a lot of criticism about we're not transparent as a district and we don't know how decisions are made and the district makes it and then tells us. When I read this, you're laying out a pretty clear roadmap of how decisions are being made, the questions you're asking, the thought process you're going through. Even some of these last couple of slides, I, I noticed it is, you're saying to folks, these are, this is how we're approaching it. Right? You're, you're improving transparency about how decisions are made. And I applaud you for that. So superintendent, as much as I expected, there were gonna be a bunch of closes, closures or um, consolidations or whatever phrase you want to use. And it was a surprise to me. I have to applaud your thoughtfulness on this. And I do think you have thought through what hasn't gone right in the past and what has been wrong to our students. And how can I do this the right way? And I see a couple of clues in here of, you know, the, the Lila Frederick School. And I mean, that's no surprise, right? We've been talking about for a while as far as getting rid of all middle schools. But the commitment to the name, the commitment to the community, we're gonna work with the community of what's, the commitment saying right up front, there is gonna be a Boston Public School building in there, a Boston Public School in that building. And we're gonna work with the community of what's the right choice to use that building. Or the West Zone ELC, which you and I toured together a few months ago and you know, seeing geographically within the building, how that can make sense, but also the commitment to the extended learning time and that type of thing of what's, you stop and say, what's important to the families that are served by it and how do we commit to that? I just, I see a lot of thoughtfulness in this, that I think it's gonna take people some time to digest and understand and realize that in fact, there isn't a dip, there is a different approach within BPS to how we're and the city, represented by Dr. Granger, and how we are approaching this. And how we're trying to be thoughtful and build in time for the community to have input. Um, for people to understand what you're trying to do. So I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more conversation. I personally want to dig in more about budget and enrollment, but not at this hour. That would be at one of the future meetings. But I thank you for the thoughtfulness on this and it's gonna take some time to absorb.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for this and, and thank you for the team who has spent a very long day here today. I know a lot of you were here since seven or eight o'clock this morning and now it's 10 and we're gonna get you out in a few minutes. Um, I've probably got five or six pages full of questions. I'm not gonna ask any of them tonight. Um, but you will get them because I mean, for me, it's, it's some, it's sort of like the impliedness of the impact of a number of the changes that are being proposed. So I want to know, understand well, how does, you know, if I'm building seats here, where are those, whose seats are no longer gonna have students in it who are gonna wake up one day and say, oh, my gosh, I need 10 more, you know? We've been through this in the past. And the issue is how are we helping every community to understand that there will be impacts? We say we want change, we know we need the change, but we can't be afraid every time any change is proposed that everybody's gonna have an outcry. I have a question is when we say community and we say it all the time, who are we talking about? And how does the community that needs to be part of any decision or conversation know that they're it? So that the right people, because oftentimes I go to meetings and the people who claim they are the community look nothing like the children or the families who are attending our schools. And so my question is, how do we actually get to the heart of the? She's gonna, maybe she has the answer. You know, how are we gonna get to the point where we can make sure school families, community neighborhoods, whatever we're defining, really know that we mean them and make room and really listen to their concerns? Because we have lots of people who want to offer opinion that may or may not ever be um, impacted by the decisions we make. So that, that's one big one for me is can we define community and really work our engagement resources to make sure they know it's them? And again, to um, Dr. um, Alkin's point, that they know and understand how it is that they can be part of the decisions that are, are being made. My one question about the West Zone, because it is an EEC and we have several and those have been longstanding programs in our community long before we had UPK, which means now almost every one of our schools has three and four-year-olds in it, but all of our schools do not have the wonderful extras that the ELC has. And I get it, there's 100 kids in that building and, and those families in right. I mean, I wish we could have that kind of programming for all of our kids, but again, we get to another equity issue of the haves and the have-nots and the where and the we're-nots. So, you know, how does that conversation? And what does that mean for the other ELCs in the long term who are not physically engaged in being in a building, but you know, are freestanding? So there are just more questions that continue to come up out of even the very small amount of programming we perceive that we're doing. Times 100. So I'm not quite sure what people think, how quickly they think we can move all of this. But again, I'm, I'm with Mr. O'Neill around, having dived into this over the last couple of weeks, understanding even in the smallness, there's so much work and the wanting to do this in a way that the families that may have in the past been impacted two or three times by poor decisions, that maybe we cannot do that again this time. Um, but to hold ourselves to the fire, to really work through the problems and not, not do it in a timely manner either, because we do have to make some decisions. And also I'm looking for numbers. When we say we're, something is leaving, does it save us money or does it cost us more because we're double ring holding that somebody harmless again while we're trying to make a change? That, that's my biggest concerns because as we're building new things, we still have kids in the old things that we need to make sure we're fully supporting as well. So I'll send you my list. Thank you all so much for this evening and it's 10:15. I know you all have questions. Um, I'm going to encourage you all to please attend your meetings with the, the staff, get them in writing. We've got a lot of work to do just on this first phase of it. But thank you all. I do not want to hold you up anymore this evening.
Thank you to all the staff. Awesome job.
Awesome job. I know we have a couple of people for public comment and I want to turn it back to Ms. Poset. Thank you.
We have few people for public comment on reports.
We have, we have public comments, so.
Edith Brazil. Edith Brazil followed, followed by Suleka Soto.
We have, we have the T V Ds.
Ms. Brazil?
Yes, I just want to ask how much time I have.
Sorry, we can't hear you.
I, I just want to ask how much time I have.
Sorry, just a second. We can't hear you.
Hello?
Yes, now can you speak a little bit louder, please?
Just a question of how much time do I have?
You have two minutes.
The chronic obsession with protecting and white sizing the exam schools while ignoring the crisis at McKinley Schools populated primarily with black males with disabilities is nauseating. Students at McKinley Schools agree with metal detectors, cameras, random searches within a rundown, physically miserable space of racial segregation. Not surprising, two-thirds of the students stopped attending. Chronic absenteeism is about 80%. Forty years after desegregation and Black McKinley students continue to be pushed into the school-to-prison pipeline at the highest rate. What has this administration done about it? BPS placed legendary leader's name on McKinley Schools while maintaining segregation, isolation and harsh disciplinary practices, which makes the name change a cruel form of racial mockery and injustice. Where is the outrage? I challenge each school committee member to spend a day in these dilapidated, outdated, lifeless buildings where BPS is now installing more cameras. The city of Boston owes an education debt to Black students and families of the McKinley Schools and all across the district. In the spirit of the legendary Melvin H. King, who fought against gentrification for racial equity and for disability rights at McKinley Schools, we will continue to fight on these issues. There is no educational justice in BPS without the long-denied racial equity for Black students. So dust off the racial equity planning tool that you've abandoned and can conduct a national search for visionary leadership with a proven track record of results rooted in racial and restorative justice and healing. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brazil. Next speaker is Suleka Soto.
Um, I would just quickly like to say two minutes is just not enough. And no wonder, right? The rest of the district can't get engagement, right? If the school committee is doing the same practice. So, um, you guys know me, I'm Suleka Soto, South End. And now I want to address the um, present issues surrounding the facilities meant to be used by our students, families and community members in the South End neighborhood. The South End, home to the MHK, South End Academy, formerly known as McKinley Schools and the Blackstone Elementary are facing significant access challenges to the high-quality student experience that need immediate attention. I would just quickly also mention that is disrespectful um, to the Blackstone parents and the community that shows up here testifying um, week after week about um, knowing what is gonna happen to their facilities. Um, in slide 15, where there's the 11 new projects, the Blackstone was not mentioned. And um, member Cardette Hernandez asked for a report on this. And again, um, you're being disrespectful not only to the community, but to the school committee as well. Um, so our South End library has been closed since April of 2022. You've heard a lot of 2022 today. This closure has left a void in our community. This especially problematic, given that the MHK does not have a library and the library at the Blackstone is floating in a space without walls or doors, making it anything but quiet and conducive to learn in. The neighborhood library is closed and the school libraries are inadequate, leaving our children without essential educational resources. The pool at the Blackstone Community Center is also closed, making um, access um, to swimming, which we know it's a, a equity issue for Black and Latino families, um, not available for those families that live there. And I would just um, wanna add, this is, I'll, I'll send in my testimony in writing. And I would just want to add, this is, I'll send in my testimony in writing. You guys asked about the synopsis. Please let me finish. There's nobody else signed up. You guys asked about the synopsis of family engagement. I would just quickly say those community meetings, which I attended, each one of them for the new announcements, were mostly attended by BPS staff, especially the Hernandez meeting. There was over thirty BPS staff, only like four families, maybe two educators. That is just unacceptable. You guys should not accept this. Don't accept it.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business?
Madam Chair, may I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
Tonight was a real special night to me earlier because of because of the Green Garner Award that we won last, as a committee last October. And we've known for a while, we were gonna be able to give out some scholarships. And the work that you, Madam Chair, did and Member Lima Barboza did, it took an incredible amount of time for us the past two months to identify schools, to identify a process, to identify an application and a scoring system and work with school leaders. And it was all worth it because of tonight and seeing the joy in the faces of the six students. And so I wanted to call out both of you and thank you for the amount of time and effort you put into it. It was a joy to work with you as the three graduates of the Boston Public Schools on this committee. It was a learn experience and I'm so, I'm walking out of here so happy because of the difference we made in the lives of six families and six students tonight. And I also want to thank our Executive Secretary, Lena Parbeck, who worked incredible amount behind the scenes to make all of this happen as well. So I just want to particularly call out the two, the three of you and thank you for that. It was a very special night and we'll walk out knowingly and tackle the lives of students in a positive way.
And I think it was an incredible experience for us, talking to these students from the six different schools and being reminded again of the amazing kids that we've had and the lives that they've had to get to where they are now. And all of the support many of them give to both the teachers, the schools, and the programs that they've been involved in in the district. And I know we never get enough positive play in the media or anywhere else about the work that is going on. But I think we had, in listening to those six schools, a good eye-opening picture.
I think we were honestly blessed, the three of us, to rock with sixteen students across six schools for twenty minutes each and to hear their stories and their ideas of how we can improve and what was important to them and how much their teachers mean to them. And I'd love to offer to the fellow members, we have their written applications if you want to see them, we'd love to share them. And you read their stories and it was, it was very, very moving. So thank you each.
Thank you all. Thanks. Okay. This includes our business for this, oh, sorry. For this evening and the next hybrid school committee meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, June fifth at six PM here at the Bowling Building. Is there a motion to close the meeting? Thank you. There a second? Thank you. Whoops, hang on, let me turn the page. Wait a minute. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the notion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a good night.